Welcome to tonight's meeting, June 18th, 2019. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cardosa.
Here.
Councilmember Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Very good. We're going to begin tonight with an invocation by Chaplain Bob Fichetti, Uba City PD, followed by Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Carol Ramirez, if she doesn't mind. Yes. You remember it? Very good.
I would just like to thank you for the privilege of praying for those that have to make the decisions that shape not only today but tomorrow and the day after. And I'm very, very grateful for this council. I'm grateful for the PD, obviously. But I'm really grateful for the citizens of this community that constantly and continually begin to support and produce great things. I'm just enamored with Uba City and Marysville. Father, I thank you so much for all that you have done. I thank you for every individual here and for what you've done in their life. I ask for a grace, an understanding, a quickening of mind and spirit, and a health and body to continue to move things forward, that the things that matter to this community and to this city be accomplished in this very room. Amen.
Thank you.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to God, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Very good.
Mr. Mayor. Through the mayor.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. We have two items we would like to request to take off the agenda this evening, if we could. That would be closed session item A and closed session item B.
All right. Consider that done. Thank you very much. We'll move on to presentations and proclamations. This is the good part. Can I have John Westhouse come forward, please? There he is. All right, good. We have a thank you. All right, we do match. Let's see here, John, work for Public Works Water Treatment Plant Supervisor. John has been with the city for 18 years and will retire July 7th of this year. Congratulations. John's experience in groundwater treatment made him a vital resource to this city. He was involved in the acquisition of the Hillcrest Water Company in 2002 and its conversion to surface water in 2011, the construction of the 4 million gallon harder in Sanborn reservoirs and booster pump stations, the technological and physical growth of the water treatment plant with the 30 million gallon expansion in 2008, the construction of the 48 million gallons per day intake structure in 2011. And last but not least, I'm sure not least at all, the low lift security project, the solar panel project, and the solar battery project. While John's handling the major project of the water treatment plant, it is his joking nature and dry sense of humor. Can you tell? I can. All right. That will be remembered most fondly by his peers. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby command John's outstanding and loyal service and sincerely urge all residents of the City of Uba City to join me in recognizing Mr. Ira John Westhouse for all of his contributions to the city community for the past 18 years. Thank you very much, John. We also have a gift, some flowers for you to take home to your wife. One second. Here they come, right here.
It's been a pleasure working for the city for 18 years with a group of people and organization that really cares about the community.
I think we have one more person who wants to comment, John. Hold on.
Through the mayor. You want to say anything?
Yeah.
Anybody on Hillcrest Water issue still alive? Congratulations.
You must not have drank the water, I guess. I don't know. Well, you need a medal too then, and some flowers. All right. Y'all don't go anywhere. We have another one here. Oh, of course, James. James Tappy, are you Jim Tappy around? There he is, right in front of me. Yeah, absolutely. Bring the family up. They're gonna love to have that. All right, so, what is your name?
Joseph.
David.
David.
Ben.
Ben.
Paul.
Jennifer.
Jennifer. All right, very good. We know who you are. All right, this has been a long road too. James, excuse me. Jim Tappy has been with the city for 29 years and will retire on July 7th, 2019. Jim has demonstrated a diversity of skill and a desire to learn during his tenure with the city, working his way from a temporary maintenance worker in the street maintenance division. What? Okay. To a mechanic, to an electrician. He is reliable, remaining on call 365 days a year for years on end and refusing to take sick leave. Holy moly. Jim truly cares about the community, obviously, which infuses everything he does with consideration and compassion such as hanging wreaths around City Hall and fixing a large capacity generator at 2:00 a.m. There is no project too big or too small for Jim. Jim takes with him a wealth of institutional knowledge about the city's facilities, traffic signals, and the city itself that cannot be replaced. Clearly not. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby commend Jim's outstanding and loyal service and sincerely urge all residents of the City of Uba City to join me in recognizing Mr. James Lee Tappy for all of his contributions to the Uba City community for the past 29 years. All right, let's give it up for him. All right. Would you care to say anything?
Sure. It's just been a real privilege to work for the city and I've really enjoyed it. It went really quick. 29 years, really quick. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Christine Ivory, your turn. Okay, so if you all would please welcome President of the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau Board, Christine Ivory, standing right here in our midst. There you go. So we want to congratulate the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau on their 100-year anniversary. The Uba Sutter Farm Bureau is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to represent Uba and Sutter Counties agriculturally to promote the economic viability of agriculture. They held their first meeting on April 6, 1918, to discuss the pork production project, the silo, oh boy, sorghum project, and even better, squirrel extermination. All right.
We're still working on that project.
Never-ending.
Never-ending.
All right. Squirrel weigh a lot of money for that, right?
Yeah.
Originally set up in farm centers for each community, and when Sutter and Uba County merged, they became the By County Farm Bureau. In the 1970s, they officially went from the By County Farm Bureau and changed their name to the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau with 21 members of the Board of Directors. In 2011, the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau created the Fund for Ag Education, a nonprofit organization to provide agricultural education efforts in the local area to include scholarships, grants to local 4H and FFA clubs, Farm Day for 2,000 third grade students, Spring Flag fundraiser for ag education, trainings for farmers and their employees, and Ag Ventures and Ag Heritage Building at the Uba Sutter Fair. That's a lot. Good job. Yeah. So now therefore be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, sincerely all residents of the City of Uba City and Uba Sutter Region to join us in congratulating the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau on their centennial celebration and their contributions to the community of Uba City. Congratulations, Christine.
I just want to say thank you to the council and to the City of Uba City for all their support, and we look forward to another 100 years.
All right, here we are. Thank you very much.
Is this one, is the next one from here?
No, it's a presentation.
Presentation, all right. Well, thank you all very much. Congratulations. Sandy. Right there, there you are in the shadow. Presentation about the summer stroll.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Harris, and councilmen and councilwoman for allowing me to speak today. So Plymouth Street Shopping District, that's our logo. Uba City Downtown Association. Wasn't sure if you guys knew a little bit about our mission, but our mission is to preserve, promote, encourage, aspire businesses, and provide safe, clean centers of culture and community life for residents and visitors alike. And then our DBA vision statement is to be known as the premier shopping, dining, entertainment, and destination for the region. So I'm here today to speak on the summer stroll that we just had on Saturday, and my name is Sandy Drown. Lot of work, lot of work. So I'm Sandy Drown, and I'm the event chair. So my role is to find a great committee to help me manage two signature events for the year. So the summer stroll is one of those, and that's my great committee that helped me get all that done. This is our logo that we had recreated this last couple of years, so hopefully you guys are enjoying that and seeing that. We'll probably stick with that one for the next couple of years. This was our poster, so we had a lot of fun activities. We were, it was from 3:00 to 9:00, and we had main stage, we had three stages, we had 150 vendors there, we added a 5-3-0 talent show, which Mayor Harris was there to help alongside Cardosa and Grace. And so there's also the businesses that help support us so that we can provide this event. This was our agenda for the day, and we also posted this online so that people could really make sure that they had got to see whatever attraction they wanted, but we really wanted to make sure that we catered to an event that was interesting to people that may be just enjoying music, or you have kids, or you want, you like, you're a family member who enjoys watching other people's talents in the community. We also have a hydro station, which we've done for the last couple of years, and we partner with Aventus Health so that if we have anybody that has any, needs to hydrate or is having any kind of need for that, we've got somebody there that can administer that. So we thank our partnership with Aventus Health. We also had a cornhole tournament, which brought in, I don't know if you guys are familiar with cornhole tournaments, but we had a lot of people from Sacramento and Elk Grove that were playing in the tournament. They started at 12:00 before the event even started, and I believe they ended about 4:00. So that was something fun that we added to our main stage area. Cornhole is, what do they call it?
Bean bags.
Bean bags. Yes, yeah. The new thing is cornhole. So I call it bean bag, but cornhole is the thing. And these are professionals that sign up, and there's a huge prize at the end, but it was very interesting. There was probably about 30 people that were competing. So here's some pictures that we had. Of course, you see Manny in one of them. Sean, you were next to him, but I couldn't push Manny out of the picture, so I apologize for not getting you in there too.
You'd have too much to glare anyway.
Yeah, so, and then of course we have our police and fire department as well, which was great to have them out there supporting and then just talking to the community. There's some other entertainment. This went from Bridge Street to Calusa Avenue, and then also took, we took advantage of Tea Garden and Center Street as well. We also had the piano that is by the Sutter Theater that everyone got to enjoy and play around with as well. Here's some more pictures. We had When in Doubt there, we had two other bands that were from Reno, they follow the circuit in Reno at the casinos, and so we were able to bring them down. So that was where most of our budget went. Also, there was a great opportunity for people to go visit the Sutter Theater because they were open, and then I added a cute little smile of a couple having a good time. So it was for all ages. This is my favorite picture that the City of Uba City's photographer took of the night, so as you can see, it was pretty busy. But I'm happy that it's a wrap. I'm happy the summer stroll's done. So some of our event successes, early booth sellout, and we were able to select better vendors for our event this year. We had a bigger attendance, approximately 19,000. And the other thing that the police department shared with us was that the attendees stayed longer, which means that they were having a great time. Better attractions for kids and adults. We created a community show that drew surrounding communities together, including the city mayor and the council, where we were able to have you come in and help us present the check to that $1,000 winner. We had no missing children for this event, so that's pretty amazing. I think at the Christmas, we had three, and so we had none this year, so we were pretty proud of that moment. We increased our media coverage, pre and post. We strengthened our partnership with the City of Uba City and the staff. We met our budget, and we gained more expertise volunteers. So that's probably a big thing, because I counted how many volunteers we had for this year, and we were at 59. So it takes a lot of people to be able to accommodate 19,000 people. So I'd like to thank the Uba City Police Department, yeah, this was the 5-3-0 talent show, and this was our winner. And she was very talented, she actually wrote her own song as she presented it. And I was telling the score, and I was trying not to cry, she was very, just a wonderful singer. She believed, I believe she was 17, Crystal? 17? So it's amazing, she's going to use that money to further her career and probably get some music lessons more so that she can really maybe pursue an opportunity in singing. We'd also, so we'd like to thank the City, the Police Department, Sergeant Slade and his team. They're always wonderful to us. They've really helped us learn how to close down the streets faster. Communication is really well with them, and so we thank the Police Department. Uba City Fire Department as well, Fire Marshal Jesse, I call him Jesse. And we met a new lady named Alyssa, who is now doing the fire inspections as well, and that was a big deal, because we have two, Tea Garden and at Center Street where we have food vendors, and there's oil and a lot of opportunity for things that could happen. And so we're very fortunate that they've partnered with us and have really taught us how to inspect our food vendors before they park their trucks. We also would like to thank the Uba City Public Works, Scott Chandler, Jack McDaniel's, their team is awesome. We met a new guy named Jason, Tony, David, Ricky, and of course, I think he already left, Jim Tappy, who he saved us at the very end, of course, as usual for one of our events. I don't know how we're going to replace him, but we're hoping to get him on our committee. We've asked him, so he said he's got time, so he's going to really think about it. Also Darren Gell and Terrell and Judy for always keeping us the communication open, and we appreciate that very much. And then of course, Mayor Harris and the City Councilman and City Councilwoman for your support and coming to help us launch our first 5-3-0 talent show. It was success. We had over 20 people that entered, and we had 12 that performed, so, thank you. Any questions? Oh, you guys made it easy. I prepared this PowerPoint this afternoon, so thank you for bearing with me as I just went through it myself for the first time.
Yeah, well Sandy, no questions doesn't mean that there's no shortage of appreciation, because it clearly a lot of work and a lot of volunteer effort, and it was, it's part of reason, one of the major reasons why we're all here right now is for things like that, and to come together as a community to enjoy each other and our company and have some fun along the way. No missing kids, nothing like that, so outstanding job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have a great committee, so thank you.
All right, let's move on to number four, Rotary Club donation to Uba City PD. I don't have a name here. Ed, okay.
There we go. Second year in a row, we've been able to be here, meet with everybody, and donate a big chunk of money this year. We're honored to bring about some funds to help out for a new police dog. Thank you.
I just want to say how grateful we are to the Rotary Club, Ed. It's going to mean a lot to us. We do have a brand-new K-9 coming onboard. The council has backed us this year. We have a new vehicle, a new training facility coming. So we're very excited and very grateful to organizations like the Rotary Club who've always helped out the city. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. PG&E, number five, PG&E's Wildfire Safety Program presentation. Brandon Sanders. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Harris, councilmembers. My name's Brandon Sanders. I'm your local public affairs representative here on behalf of PG&E. Hoping to share with you some updates on the work we're doing around wildfire safety throughout our system. Like to start by saying that the devastation in 2017 and 2018 really hit us hard as a company, everyone knows that. We are very much focused on taking additional measures to harden our system, improve the safety of the communities we serve, and be a better utility off into the future. And so I'm here today to share with you information that I'm taking around to all of the cities and counties within the division I cover. That would be the Sierra Division, including Eldorado, Placer, Nevada, Sierra, Uba, and Sutter Counties. I've not been before this council before, so I do appreciate the opportunity and want you to know first that I'm available to you and all city staff. If anything comes up PG&E-related, wildfire or not, I can be an advocate for you back at the office, and I've worked with a few folks here at the city over time, and it's been a good experience. You have a really good group of folks here working at the city. So I'll move through this pretty quickly. I want to make sure that we have time for questions and want to be mindful of everyone's time this evening. I got it upside down. So in light of what's been occurring in recent years, we're really investing in a number of additive measures to enhance and improve the safety of our system. The first of those is real-time monitoring intelligence, employing new technologies to increase our visibility into the system, enhance safety measures. There's a wide range of efforts that we're taking and investments that we're making to improve the system and its resiliency against hard weather and things of that nature. Additionally, actively hardening portions of the system, particularly in the high wildfire threat areas, to address the growing risk of high severity wildfire. The first of those is the establishment of our 24/7 wildfire safety operations center out of our office in San Francisco. This is staff 24/7, 365, with meteorologists, fire management professionals, emergency management professionals, working in close coordination with CAL OES, local offices of emergency services, fire departments, law enforcement agencies, and the like. We've installed about 240 or so new weather stations throughout the system, primarily in the foothole region. We're going to be increasing that to 1,300, and the nice thing about that is we're making that data publicly available. The website to view that information is misawest.utah.edu, and that's going to be really useful for our communities in challenging weather situations where we might be facing a public safety power shut-off, which I'll touch on here shortly. Additionally, we're installing even more high-definition wildfire detection cameras. That's going to be a good complement to the daily flights that we run from Redding to Auburn, from Auburn to Sonora, and from Sonora to Bakersfield to support CAL Fire's efforts on early detection to tackle fires as soon as they pop up. One of the big things that we're doing is increasing our vegetation clearances around power lines. We have a routine process where we'd come through once or twice a year, inspect each span of wire, and address any overhanging limbs or failing trees. We're looking to expand those clearances in the highest fire-threat areas, up to 12 feet. That allows us to accommodate for the growth of a given tree throughout the year. It minimizes the need for us to repeatedly enter an individual's property, decreasing the impact to their property and also the cost to ratepayers. We're doing a lot in the upcountry around tree mortality. Many of you are likely aware that there is a bark beetle epidemic ongoing. The wildfire threat is greatly amplified by those dead trees, and we're actively working to address those as well. In addition to our routine inspection intervals, which are required by state law, we have in the last about nine months inspected about 50,000 transmission structures throughout the system using drones, linemen climbing the actual towers, helicopters and such. This high-definition imagery that we're gathering is going to an operations base out of San Ramon, where we have engineers all day, every day, looking at those images to identify any damaged equipment, chipping paint, missing signage, or security measures. And we are actively addressing those as they come up. This is going to be very good for our system, so instead of doing the inspections on their regular intervals, we're getting about five to seven years of inspections done in the last nine months. It's been quite an effort involving contractors from out of the state and throughout the country, really, and we're getting some good results out of that, and it's really been a great improvement to the system overall. Again, those inspections include visual inspections, we're using drones and helicopters, and we're putting eyes on each piece of equipment, particularly in the high-fire-threat areas. We're acting on those repair needs immediately. We're very much involved and cut in with all the different cities and counties that are impacted in that accelerated work stream, looking for opportunities to bundle permitting, for example. That lessens the workload for city and county staff who review those items, and also it streamlines our process and decreases the cost to customers, in particular when we have large volumes of work that we need to get permitted. We're looking for opportunities and acting on them to do things like replacing wood poles with steel or concrete or composite poles, replacing uncoated conductor, which is typically the industry standard with coated tree wire. It's far more resilient against falling limbs and high winds. And we're looking to establish resilience zones in some of the most remote communities that we serve, where we install specialized equipment that allow us to isolate a small pocket. where we install specialized equipment that allow us to isolate a small pocket of commerce, if you will, in the city center that would include things like a gas station, the church, the firehouse, maybe a school or a grocery store. And during a large wildfire event where a community as a whole loses power or during a public safety power shut off, we'll be able to roll in a large catapult generator, basically the size of a semi-trailer, and tie that in to keep all of those essential services energized for the duration of that outage. It's important that folks have access to groceries and gas for their generators and those types of things. So we're looking to build those out primarily in the upcountry areas that are really remote and can be difficult to access during a fire. We have a lot of automation in our system, which is great in the wintertime. It reduces outage durations and allows us to more quickly restore impacted customers. The challenge there is that during fire season, these automated systems do pose a risk to to the wildfire issue as far as if a wire were to be down, that automated breaker would try to test the line. It could potentially throw a spark into the duff. So we've proactively deactivated. That sounds kind of weird, proactively deactivated. But we have turned those off during the highest fire threat seasons. I think that's going to be a really good thing and it's going to help improve our performance in terms of operating the system during fire season. There's about half of the automation within the system that is operated at the pole, if you will, and about half that we operate out of our grid control center in Rockland. And the ones that we can control remotely, we're leaving those on until conditions develop that warrant them being deactivated. The primary reason I'm here today is to share with you some information about our public safety power shut off program. This is something that has been prevalent in San Diego as an example for quite some time. When we see red flag warnings issued, conditions, this confluence of conditions of extreme low humidity, extreme low fuel moisture, unusually high winds and high heat, coupled with on-the-ground observations using our weather stations, fire cameras and actual personnel in the field, we're working closely with state agencies and other leaders in county government primarily to proactively de-energize certain portions of the system in the interest of public safety. This is not something that would that would likely impact the city proper. We do have the potential for some of the outlying unincorporated areas of the county that might have a Yuba City address that would be potentially impacted. But this is again, something that we're doing only as a last resort when conditions warrant. And then again, in the interest of public safety to avoid a catastrophic event. This map illustrates some of the areas that would be most likely affected by a public safety power shut off. As you can see, the valley floor is largely omitted from that. But it's important to note that if we're in a position where we need to de-energize a large transmission circuit that perhaps traverses Sutter County and feeds a portion of Yuba City, there is a possibility off into the future that there could be a de-energization of portions of of Yuba City. And so we're getting out here as soon as we can, trying to communicate early and often about that potential so that folks can kind of have that on their radar and make preparations accordingly. We have a really robust communications effort around this. We're very closely tied in with as many folks as we can in emergency management circles, but additionally our customers. And so kind of our baseline notification process is that we would send out notifications 48 hours in advance to both our cooperating agencies, such as cities and counties and state agencies, and continue that at regular intervals as the conditions developed up to the point where we would have to make that decision to de-energize. It's important to note for for your constituents throughout your community, it's important that everyone update their contact information with PG&E so that in the event of emergency, we can contact you. There's a number of ways you can do that. You can sign up for text alerts, email, or phone, or all three. You can also follow our social media outlets as well. So this slide primarily relates to the upcountry areas and the more remote areas, but it speaks to our restoration process following a public safety power shut off. When we de-energize the system, we essentially lose that remote visibility. And so that requires us to inspect every span of de-energized circuit on foot, on ATV, in a truck, in a helicopter, to ensure that that is all fully intact before we turn it back on. The last thing we want to do is turn off the power for public safety and have it, you know, start a fire when we turn it back on. And so there's a really robust patrol process. We bring in resources from throughout the state, mostly from areas that would be unaffected, like the coastal regions or down into Kern Division, for example. Bringing in everyone we can to do those patrols. There have been two events so far, one last October, and then one I'm sure you're all very aware of from about two weeks ago. We do have documented damage during those events that had we not de-energized, it could have potentially resulted in something happening. Those after-action records are all filed with the CPUC and you can find those on their website. And then, of course, once the all-clear is given on the weather and the patrols are complete, we will re-energize the system and notify our customers. So PG&E has a plan. We're acting on it. We understand that it's impactful to our community, but it's something we have to keep in our toolbox in the interest of public safety. There's a lot of resources available on our website. You can see some of them highlighted here. We have a lot of emergency preparedness guidelines, toolkits, resources on our website. I encourage you all to visit pge.com. You'll see right on the homepage, there's a banner across the top that speaks to wildfire safety. You can get a wealth of information there to help prepare you and your family. If you have loved ones or family or friends that live in the upcountry, maybe checking with them, make sure that they're aware of all of this and that they viewed the information and made appropriate preparations. We are very focused on our medical baseline customers. Those are medically sensitive individuals that need things like a CPAP machine or an oxygen machine or something of that nature. We have a standalone effort throughout these events where we work to communicate with them directly. We have the call center reach out to all the medically medical baseline customers to verify that they're in a position to get through it, that they've made appropriate preparations. If we're not able to get in touch with them and verify that they're aware of the situation, we are bringing gas service reps primarily from the Bay Area. These are folks that inspect gas meters on a large scale across large landscapes, pulling them off of that work and they're going, they're rolling trucks to every one of those doors and talking to those people because we're very sensitive to that. And we want to make sure that our medical baseline customers are well cared for. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the present, oh, through the mayor, sorry. Have to follow protocol. Thank you for the presentation, very thorough and it answered a lot of my questions. Where is your office located?
My desk is in Rockland.
Okay.
And I live in Auburn. I represent, as I shared, the 50 and 80 corridor and then out into Sutter County.
And you mentioned the possibility of a power outage affecting us because of a transmission line. I guess I'm trying to wrap my my head around, are we talking about things like the P substation, lines going into that? I mean, what are the possibilities of an outage affecting the Yuba City within our corporate city limits?
It's an excellent question, Councilman. And so it largely depends on the conditions that we're seeing and the geographic extent of those conditions. It's hard to really say with any type of certainty what the the expanse of any outage would be. But there is definitely the possibility of losing source side feeds into substations. The the good thing about a place like Yuba City and others is there's oftentimes ways for us to switch around and maintain certain circuits live while we de-energize others. So I think it would mostly be coming down out of the upcountry. So those sources would likely be the first to be affected. But I mean, it's, you know, we're basically letting everyone know that there is the possibility that if we do de-energize transmission level circuits, that it could result in large-scale outages. The one upside to that being a city is that we have a lot of options. We have great access. We have a lot of switching ability and we'll have resources close in. We have, as you know, a very large facility in Marysville. We have a lot of resources on the ground and we basically work our restoration process from the most populated areas out. And so while you may have heard in the news, individuals being out for three to four to five days, those examples are largely in the furthest reaches of the system in the upcountry.
Thank you for the answer. I know we we suffered a power outage here way back when and it took about two or three days to get everybody back up. And it caused a significant amount of of property damage due to spoiled food, et cetera. The the big generators that you speak of, are those able to, forgive my ignorance, but are those able to plug into a substation and supply it and then supply down the line? Or is that mostly, help me understand how that works?
It depends on the configuration. You know, I'm not an electrical engineer, so I probably can't describe it fully. But I don't think, for example, that we could pull one of those into your, one of your localized substations here and just immediately plug it in. It's quite a bit more complex than that. Those those generation assets, I think, are more intended for communities that could be facing three, five, or seven-day durations where we have that portable interconnecting transformer is what it's called. And we're looking, as 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 time goes on, we'll install more and more of those and that'll become much more prevalent throughout the system. But I would, I can't really speak with absolute certainty, but I don't think that we'd be able to pull in those generators to work in a landscape like a city, just given the the load demands. I don't think those would be adequate to keep a substation energized at the level it would need to be.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Of course. Thank you.
Diana, do we have any, maybe the possibility of getting on our website or even be a redundancy compared to PG&E bill? But even even our water bill, like we've done some other announcements to let the residents know about PG&E's website and preparations they can make and whatnot?
Yes, we can add that.
All right. Thank you. It'd be a good idea just to help out with that, getting the word out.
If I may, Mayor Harris, we do have quite a bit of really good customer-facing information, single-page fact sheets, infographics and all of those types of things. I'd be happy to share them with Diana and those can be broadcast freely on any medium you'd like.
Exactly. My my point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Moving on to number six, the public hearing for consideration of the 1920 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan presented by Darren Gale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And before Brandon leaves, I would like to publicly thank him. He's helped us on a couple of commercial projects. I hear recently specifically the Carriage Square project, which there was an issue with connection and across the street with at the Riley Lee Shopping Center. He was helped helped us kind of as a contractor contacted the city. We were able to put them in connection with Brandon and Brandon specifically helped them out with those projects. So thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor and city council members, it's a pleasure to be before you this evening to talk about the city's community development block grant. And really appreciate the city council's participation this year as projects and priorities have been identified. This is a presentation that I've given a couple of times now, but since it's a public hearing, I know we have new people in the audience, I'll briefly go through it. The city of Yuba City is an entitlement jurisdiction with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The intent of the program and the funds are supposed to help provide decent housing and suitable living economic environments and to expand economic development opportunities in low-income and moderate-income communities. On an annual basis, the city council is required to adopt an annual action plan, which is before you this evening. Additionally, every five years, a an updated consolidated plan needs to be prepared. And this coming year, we'll be going through that process and having public meetings. And then in September, a caper is adopted, which highlights the city's success in audit of of the the project and to ensure that everything meets the five-year consolidated plan. The process this year, which is similar to what we've done in past years, a notice is sent to both past and what we hope to might be a possible future sub recipients. Not that many years ago, we had many, many sub recipients and even small grant grants, grantee awards. And HUD asked us to to try to, you know, put those together. And you see with the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium, that they're receiving a significant portion of funds where in the past, we would give those monies directly to every single local nonprofit that's that they're working with. We held a public workshop in February. Applications were due in March. And those applications were reviewed by staff and then the city council has had a couple of opportunities to add some some additional input. And then we've had a 30 30-day public notice as required by law and then feel Democrat. And that is where we are today. So the city, it will be receiving just under $650,000 for the 1920 CDBG fiscal year. Those funds, 20% of the funds can be allocated for administration. 15% of the funds can be allocated for public services and the remaining 65% can go for projects. So as relates to administration, those funding goes to the city that pays for the analyst who works on that project. Also, any anytime that city staff puts into this, these are the funds that are set aside for that. Public service, this year, the 97,500 is all going to go towards the Sutter Yuba Homeless Consortium. The one item is here is 50% of this is being set aside for the Sutter County shelter that they're looking to build on Live Oak Boulevard and this is for operations. And then the projects, there's 15,000 for freed for home home repair. There is a city program which we contract through the Regional Housing Authority for owner occupied rehabilitation. And then $60,000 for the Housing Authority for the Kingwood Commons Roofing Project. And then finally, for public facilities, they're funding for the city of Yuba City ADA sidewalks and then for Sam Brandon Park Playground Equipment. At this time, we'd ask that the city council holds, conduct a public hearing. And if there are no questions, then we would ask that a resolution be adopted approving the 1920 Annual Action Plan. And I can answer any questions that the city council might have.
We're going to do the public hearing first and then we'll do that real quick. All right. So the public hearing for consideration, the 2019 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Hearing, no further comment on the issue. We're closing the public hearing. Bring the matter back to council for questions and action.
Through the mayor. Mr. Gale, who's going to administer this program now?
So administer the CDBG program?
Yes, for the city. Which staff member?
Yeah, so Jaspreet Kar is the analyst within the department. And then as the director, the interim director currently, I'm, she reports directly to me and so I'm the one who oversees that. All of the notifications that come to the city are both sent are sent actually to the mayor, addressed to the mayor and to the city manager. And then they hand those documents over to us, any official documentation.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, through the mayor.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to consider the 1920 1920 2020 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, recommendations A and B.
All right, a motion to approve. Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And oppose? None. Thank you very much. We're going to number seven, which is also a public hearing for proposed water and wastewater rates for fiscal year 2019 and 20, presented by Diana Lanley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Terrell's going to bring up the presentation.
All right.
So the item before you tonight is water and wastewater utility rates for this next fiscal year. So to remind the council, the purpose of rates is to ensure adequate revenues in the water and wastewater enterprise funds, which covers operation and maintenance, debt service, and then also capital projects. So for background, the council adopted the Water and Wastewater Rate Study in April of 2016, which proposed adjustments to the city's water and wastewater rates over the next five years. The final year of the plan is in fiscal year 2021. In June of 2016, council adopted water and wastewater ordinances that provides for council review of rates on an annual basis. So as part of the March 28 budget workshop, I provided a brief presentation on the three different options for rates for fiscal year 1920 and then I'm bringing them back tonight for council action. If you recall, earlier this year in January, we had a water and wastewater workshop where we went over a variety of topics related to water and wastewater, one of which being rates. And at that time, council directed staff to bring the three rate options forward. So here's a quick slide on water conservation. So looking at the last three years compared to 2013, you can see that in 2016, our average was about 24.5%. In 2017, it was 15.6%. And then in 2018 through April, we were tracking an average of 18.9%. So why is this important? In the rate model, it was assuming a 15% conservation amount. So if you are over that, that means that customers are utilizing less water, which means that your revenues are likely to be less than what was anticipated through the rate model. So we are seeing this on water sales. We're expected to be approximately 6.5% higher as compared to a 10% rate increase that was approved for this current fiscal year. And on the wastewater side, we're expected to be approximately 6.1% higher as compared to an 8% rate increase. So that higher percentage of conservation has had a direct impact on the projected revenues for both water and wastewater this this current fiscal year. So that higher percentage of conservation has had a direct impact on the projected revenues for both water and wastewater this this current fiscal year. So just for a brief history, for water wait rate history. You can see that in two thousand eleven, we had a rate study that was approved through a two eighteen process. And approved by council and so we had five years of rate increases. And then we're into the second five year rate study where you can see significantly higher increases. And that was largely due to the drought that occurred between two thousand thirteen through two thousand fifteen. Similarly, for wastewater, if you look at the rate history again, increases went into effect in two thousand eleven. And then again with the new rate study in two thousand sixteen. So the three options that council requested that staff bring forward. One option is no increases for fiscal year nineteen twenty and in fact, that's what the budget assumes. Because we weren't sure what rate increase would be adopted by council, we just assumed no rate increases in the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. A second option would be a three and a half percent increase for water or a four percent increase for wastewater. A third option is a seven percent increase for water or an eight percent increase for wastewater. So how were how were these rates identified? So last year when we did the rate models, we look ahead. And we were anticipating a seven percent water increase and an eight percent wastewater increase for fiscal year nineteen twenty. So that's how that option three was determined. And then in January, council directed staff to look at the zero increase and then split the middle and that's how you came up with the three and a half and the four. So under the various options for water, you can see that we have the current rates. A zero percent increase, a three and a half percent increase, a seven percent increase, and then what's been approved through the prop two eighteen amount. Similarly, for wastewater, you have the current rate, no increase, a four percent increase. Eight percent increase and then the proposition two eighteen approved amount. Sewer is a little bit different in that it's broken down by use and so you see you have single family, multifamily, commercial. And then as you go into industrial, they're actually charged based upon their loading on the plant. So it's volume, total suspended solids and BOD and then you also have the septic charges, septic collar charges. So just for some information in terms of how does it impact a bill? So if you take a one inch water service for a single family dwelling. You have a, I'll use the annual, which is about an average of fifteen HCF, which HCF is a hundred cubic feet. And one HCF is seven hundred forty eight gallons. So on a monthly basis, the average. Household on an annual basis would use fifteen HCF per month. So under the current scenario, you have a thirty five dollar eighty four cent water bill, fifty two dollar ninety six cent sewer bill. So totaled eighty eight dollars and eighty cents. If you were to increase water by three and a half percent sewer by four percent, you get ninety two dollars and seventeen cents. If you go with the seven percent and the eight percent, you get ninety five dollars and fifty five cents. If you were to go with a proposition two eighteen approved amount, it'd be one hundred dollars and thirty five cents. So the fiscal impact from water under the three different scenarios. So the additional revenue that would be generated from the rate increase, of course, if you have no increase, it's no additional revenue as compared to this current fiscal year. Under the three and a half percent increase, it's projected to be a little over half a million dollars. Over the seven percent increase would be a little bit over a million dollars. And so what does that mean? Once you deduct out the operations and you deduct out debt service. That results in a net net cash flow after rate increases, which equates to money available for projects. Of two point six million dollars for no increase, three point, almost three point two for a three and a half percent increase. And three point seven for a seven percent increase. What this doesn't take into account is that as part of the budget, council adopted to reallocate. The two thousand thirteen water certificates. From an allocation of seventy five percent new customers, twenty five percent existing customers. To fifty percent new customers, fifty percent existing customers. And so that's going to be a reduction of this net cash flow of approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Earlier this year, we just finished the water master plan update. And so in looking at the funding required for existing water system deficiencies. It recommends a schedule for funding capital projects. And as you can see, in the first one to five years, it's a total of thirty six point six million. Six to ten years, twenty two point six million, eleven to fifteen years, nineteen point five. Sixteen to twenty nineteen million for a total of one hundred five point four million. Now that does include three million annually for pipeline pipeline replacement. Now we recognize the water master plan is. It it's a master plan and so that's identifying everything you need. And oftentimes, master plans as they equate to reality, you don't have the luxury of being able to get. To to collect that money and implement your water master plan. So we recognize that, but this is just showing. What would be required to fund those projects if money were no object. The fiscal impact for wastewater, so if you had no increase. It would of course be zero additional revenue. Four percent increase is six hundred, about six hundred thirty thousand, eight percent increase, a little over one point two million. And the net cash flow after rate increases for no increases about one point five million. A four percent increase is two point one million and eight percent increase is about two point seven million. So what this doesn't take into account is the anticipated increase in cost for biosolid disposal. Council recently gave the direction to negotiate with recology on a side letter agreement to our franchise agreement for biosolid disposal. And so we know that those rates are going to be going up and so this doesn't take that into account for this fiscal year. So the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing. And then adopt a resolution setting the water rates at a rate less than the proposition two eighteen approved rates. And similarly, do the same for wastewater. So in your packet, you have three different resolutions to choose from for water and wastewater. So that we can proceed. The alternatives is to consider a different option for implementation of water and or wastewater rates. And then this is something that's this next bullet is very important. Adopt rates with an effective date of August first two thousand nineteen. Now I know we have at least two people in the audience tonight. That have come forward previously. Regarding the July first implementation and and why the July first implementation has been. Contentious item in the past is because July first would be applied to the June consumption. And so in the past, the customer, some customers have come forward requesting an August first implementation. So that it actually applies to the July consumption, so it equates to the actual fiscal year. So those are alternatives that council could proceed forward with as well. So with that, I recommend that you conduct a public hearing and I'm also here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. If we could have. Mr. McDowell come forward and while you're doing that, I will open the public hearing. Which is the public hearing for the proposed water and wastewater rates for fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council issue, please step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do have the one as stated, Mr. McDowell. Welcome, sir.
Mayor Harris and council members, my name is Dale McDowell. That's tough to follow there. And my comment about the rates, just very simple, take the zero increase and go, we've got funds to carry on and okay. And she covered the the one about the the rate so far, we're running at about a. Sixty six percent increase for three years, that's not counting this one. So with the proposed increases, that's going to jump to somewhere between seventy five and eighty percent increase for the year. And that's with an assumption of the average, which has been talked about in the past. That average uses is twenty twenty units a month for the average average family, not just the basic fifteen units. And so that and then in comparison to the. Previous three, the last three years of the last five year plan. It was up like two dollars and twenty four cents. So we're about a five hundred, oh, five and a half, five hundred and a half percentage increase. And this three years compared to those, so I always look back at those and see, well, you know, that's a that's a huge difference. Realize we got some extra money there, but anyway, I think all the rate payers would, you know. Appreciate your consideration and and moving the receipt recessed it back to July the first. With the payment coming on August the first bill, which that's the one that went back where we Juneed for it. And it's a good time to move that back and I'm sure the rate payer would appreciate that. That would coincide with your fiscal year, which that's one of the things that you want to do and all these changes that's taking place and with the meters and everything. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Phil Trenor, Uba City. On the water issue, I would like the council to consider. If you put through your eight percent increase, you'll be getting another seventy five percent increase in your profits. So what I would like the council to do or like the city to do in your webpage. Tell the public what you're doing. Show them what the water, what's actually happening in the water department, what's happening in the wastewater department. Show them that they are actually a profit motivated center and show us what's happening. But I think if you're going to go through with any increases this year, tell the public ahead of time. And if you do go through with an increase, what are you doing with the money? Transparency is a wonderful word in politics today. But we've blackened out all the windows. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Phil.
I'm back. Been busy. My name's Thomas Burns, eighteen eighty five Green Gate Street. So I love paying more for less. I mean, I see it everywhere I go. You can't even get a half gallon of ice cream anymore, you know. But I'll share this little story. I met, I know this guy from the Soviet Union who immigrated here. In the nineteen eighties and I saw him a few weeks back and here's what he told me. He said, he's looking to move back to Moscow because he said. And he lives in Florida right now. He said. In the United States, I feel like I'm on a slave labor program. Ever increasing prices. And he said, at least when we, when I lived under communism, I had time for my family. So the escalation of all our fees on and on and on. And inflation, you know, there's people out there that, I mean, I can afford five more dollars or whatever. But there are people out there that can't afford. A steady increase, time after time after time. Not only underwater, but on everything. And we heard PG and E. It was a nice presentation, but what he failed to say is we're going to stick it to the people to pay for it all and that's the facts. That's what I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else care to comment? All right. Hearing no further comment on the issue, I'm going to close the public hearing, bring it back to matter to council.
I have a question, but I always get to go first, so someone else want to go? It's a privilege to the right hand seat, I think. So this is like the Price is Right. Thank you for the presentation, Diana. Are we able to, first question is, are we able to change the rates at any time or is it a one time a year? Scenario for changing rates?
No, you could change it anytime. It's just when we we redid the ordinances for the water and wastewater rates in two thousand sixteen. We committed to bringing it before council as part of the May budget study session. So that you could review annually as part of the budget process, so you're required to do that. But you could come back anytime throughout the year. The the main thing is you can't increase the rates more than the proposition two eighteen amount.
Okay, so I want to zero in on the wastewater, more than the water right now anyway. So I know that West Yost is doing a study for us. And it's going to, it's going to have some contingencies in there and different scenarios that they're they're going to give us information on. When will that study be completed?
Early twenty twenty.
Early twenty twenty, okay. And as you mentioned in the report. The previous council opted not to include biosolids when they were negotiating with recology, but now we are. And that's going to affect, potentially affect our wastewater rates, correct?
So the current rates include our current costs for biosolid disposal? The issue is that we know those costs are going to increase.
So when we're looking at a zero or or the proposed rate increases, we already know that if we choose the zero, it's going to go up anyway. Possibility is there.
Yeah, so what that would equate to is you would have less money available for capital projects.
Okay. That's the questions I have for now. Thanks.
Through the mayor. Again, thank you for all the presentations. You've been very thorough with with everything. I hear a lot of confusion though from the general population trying to figure out, you know, is it a profit center? Where's all the money going? Back from our very first workshop on our water and wastewater. The baseline eighty eight dollars that you're paying eighty eight eighty. On the water side of that, fifty percent of that bill is going to debt service. On the sewer side, thirty percent is going to debt service. So instantly, we have fifty percent left for operations and expansion. And at the same time, we have seventy percent on the sewer side for operations and expansion. I've heard it before I got elected. I got an email. I think most of the council got it as well. It roughly a. How old was he? Was he any anyways elderly gentleman, fixed income. Dealing with the eighty eight dollars a month, single. He he goes on to say that he can only flush his toilet, wash his clothes and brush his teeth a few times a day because he's on a fixed income. The reality that we have is things are going up. But the way that it's gone up under two eighteen, I'm very uncomfortable with. I'm like Mr. Burns. Five dollars isn't gonna break my bank. But we have a lot of people out here that are elderly, that are on fixed income. Five dollars is huge. Five dollars means the difference between possibly getting a medication or not. The difference between, you know, having a decent meal or not. And the sad part about it is is those people will usually not speak up and say anything. Also, I understand under Prop two eighteen, there's no way for us to subsidize the bills. Is that correct to my understanding?
You can't subsidize at the. Make the other rate payer subsidize. You can subsidize from other funding sources such as the general fund.
Right, and that's that's what I was kind of getting to. I mean, our general fund only has so much money that we have to allocate to take care of everything. But then at the same time, there's no way to charge a surcharge onto the bill and then use that as kind of an offset for the. The people that are in a hardship situation. As tough as it is, I've kicked this around over and over and because of the prior actions it's gone on since two thousand eleven. Basically, the water and sewer bills have, they've gone up almost a hundred percent. They've gone up roughly ninety percent since two thousand eleven and the charts clearly showed it. We went from roughly eighteen to thirty five and then we went from. About forty one, you've got the numbers back there on the graphs. There we go. We went from thirty one to fifty two and then we went from like eighteen to thirty five, so almost doubled. Over the years, eighteen twenty five up to thirty five eighty four, so basically a hundred percent increase over time. We've been through recession, we've come through recovery, we've gone through a housing crisis. The the biggest problem we have in our area is a lot of the incomes have not come back, Mr. Mayor, to to that kind of level. The fixed income is still the fixed income. As much as I know the need and I know what we're sacrificing, I've said it from day one. I do not feel that the rate payers of the city can bear any more increases for the year and I do. any more increases for the year, and I do realize that this is a trade-off from setting aside for future expansion. Um, we do have things we gotta deal with, with the biosolids, 'cause that was a, a mess that was left for us, uh, there, Mr. Councilman. And, um, I just think that we need to try to look at other ways to fix this in the near future versus just another rate increase, so I would be in favor of leaving them for now at zero for the next year.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment?
Through the mayor, um. Diana, what, one of the things, um, you know, as I'm learning more and more about wastewater and water and infrastructure, um, it's been quite challenging, to be honest, about learning all these particular needs in the city and then how, um, rates are connected to the, um, the use and, um, and maintaining the infrastructure. So when you mentioned, um, that within the rate itself, you know, it's part of operation and maintenance, um, debt service and, um, CIP. Can you explain a little bit of each one to help the consumer understand how that ties into that rate? And then I'll ask my following question.
So the operation and maintenance pays for the operating budget for the water treatment plant, the water distribution crew, and then the wastewater treatment plant and the collection system crew. So that's salaries and benefits, that's material services and supplies. Huge portion of that's power, chemicals, um, because water and wastewater are very intensive in terms of material services and supplies. And then you have debt service, and so the city has either obtained, uh, loans or sold bonds to fund infrastructure projects. Uh, particularly for, um, water and wastewater, it's either to, to reconstruct or, um, rehab facilities, or in some situations, you're building facilities that do benefit the existing customers as well as the new, uh, development. And so that's why you have that split between new and old. And so when you are collecting rates, right off the top, those are two obligations that you have that, um, you, they, they get deducted first, and then whatever's remaining goes towards your capital improvement program.
It, would that be then what you're referencing to the additional revenue, um, that cash flow rate?
Yes.
So that's the remaining balance, because we kinda take these two-thirds, I guess, if you divided of, of those three items that you mentioned, correct?
Right.
Okay, um, so then with the plan that was mentioned about, um, the wastewater master plan, correct?
Yes.
And that and just kinda again summarize it a little bit, just what is that plan and the intent of that plan, but not too long in length, 'cause I just wanting to help understand this.
So the wastewater master plan is a comprehensive evaluation of the sewer collection system as well as the wastewater treatment facility, and they go through and evaluate the existing condition and determine which, what capital projects are necessary to, um, for replacement, rehabilitation, uh, you know, for the next twenty years. So I, I showed you that fiscal outlook for the next twenty years. And so identifies those improvements that are necessary, and then what that does is it helps to steer, um, your rate study, and then also what, you know, rates should be collected in the future, especially, you know, as Councilman Shaw noted, uh, if there's a desire to go in the future, pay as you go versus financing, then that looks completely different than if you're going to finance projects. So, um, that master plan is a comprehensive evaluation of your sewer facilities to identify what improvements need to be constructed.
And, um, I guess I'm curious to know, um, why this plan wasn't done earlier and why are we waiting now? And I know you mentioned it before, but there's new.
Right, so the last wastewater master plan was updated around, I believe it was two thousand six or two thousand eight. And so, um, it's with the significant changes in water consumption due to the drought, that greatly impacts the, um, the estimates for how much people utilize the sewer facilities. And why is that important when you're looking at your infrastructure to serve new development? That has a potential to reduce the pipe sizes that are required to serve new development because people are now using less water. And so we felt it was time to do a comprehensive update because there's been so much change since the drought. And then also your master plans, you wanna update approximately every ten years. There's change in technology, you need to reevaluate your system to make sure that you have something moved in the priority. And, um, also as part of this master plan, we are evaluating biosolids disposal because over the last few years, there's been so many changes in technology and how you deal with biosolids, not just, uh, disposing the landfill.
And has there been, um, changes in some of those, um, rules within the biosolids from the state?
Yes, there's, uh, state legislation that is completely changing how biosolids are addressed in terms of organics. And so the state is putting a restriction on how much organics the landfills can accept, and that's impacting rates and the ability for landfills to accept biosolids.
And that's the process that we're in right now to determine that particular rate, whatever, because of these changes in the law and where we're heading, okay? Um, thanks for taking the time to kinda detail that out a little bit more. So with the wastewater, excuse me, the water master plan, uh, so those would definitely, those two plans would uh, complement each other in how, whatever we need to prepare for the future, right? Now, um, I was, uh, I had a long conversation with a, a longtime developer, um, here locally and, um, mentioned about the capacity of the facilities um, in our region. And so to look at, uh, potentially developing in, if we were to do that, um, in our city, which I hope we do because we need some, or a lot, I don't know, at this point, but, um, where are we with capacity-wise with, uh, water and wastewater?
So from a plant perspective, you have a lot of capacity, both the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment facility. Depending upon where development occurs, you have some limitations in terms of your actual infrastructure to areas that could potentially develop, so the actual pipelines that get there. In terms of sewer collection, if it's utilizing the existing trunk line that goes down Walton and Lincoln, there's only a certain amount of capacity that we can accommodate for new homes. And so any significant developments require the installation of your larger diameter transmission water lines and then your larger diameter sewer collection lines, particularly to serve the Western sphere of influence area.
Okay.
And I just, let me add on to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So new development, uh, the infrastructure for new development is paid for under connection fees, which is separate from rates.
Correct.
So rates is attributable to existing customers and existing infrastructure.
Um, hypothetical situation, so if we were to increase development, would that mean that perhaps rates could decrease because there's more consumers, or is it across the board?
Um, it could potentially decrease 'cause you do have more consumers to spread the cost over. However, long-term, if you're setting aside money for that ongoing infrastructure replacement, you're also increasing the amount of infrastructure to ultimately be maintained.
Okay.
And then you could potentially be increasing your operation and maintenance costs if you increase significantly, 'cause you need to bring on more people for the maintenance of the facilities.
Okay. Um, thank you for that. I think that at this point, um, I am leaning towards, uh, in this moment, no increase for this particular year. Um, but I'm interested to wait until we get that, um, wastewater master plan. Combine the two and perhaps, um, you know, relook at it in the following year if we all agree to no increase at this point.
I will add that with the final year of the master plan being fiscal year twenty twenty-one, staff will be bringing up proposal in twenty twenties to start the next rate study. However, you do have Prop two eighteen rates set high enough that that would be part of the analysis, is do we need to move forward with any type of Prop two eighteen study, because you still have the ability to set rates up to the two eighteen amount, so that would be part of the analysis. But we would recommend, um, undertaking the next rate study in twenty twenty, so that in case a proposition two eighteen process need, did, did need to take place, it could do so in early twenty twenty-one, so you could set it up for implementation for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
And so if we were, if we all came to agreement, or not all, you know, majority, uh, decided not to increase um, this, this year, um, I, I think that to say to our community that there's going to be a need perhaps the following year. Um, you know, for allowances for this particular year, we didn't include the increase in, in the budgets for nineteen twenty. But based on, um, the needs of the facilities in order to maintain the quality of what you're receiving at this moment, uh, unfortunately, sometimes those things end up costing us a little more, but the rate discussion, I don't think is going to end here, obviously. I think we're gonna continue having this conversation. But, um, at this moment, that's, that's where, um, I'm leaning towards that position. Thank you.
Follow-up through the mayor? Yep. Ms. Langley, uh, thank you for, for hitting on that. We've had previous discussions towards the plants and things. You hit on the key issue that basically cripples this city in various ways. And that is the fact that we have not developed our infill area. We haven't accessed the gold mine setting here that starts making things work. Because as you said, our, our water and wastewater, if it's in this particular areas of the infill, which is what we've identified as our key area, that would increase the revenue, and our system at current could carry that load. And so, uh, I, I appreciate you bringing that, and, and Esmondola, thank you for bringing that as well, because that's really the key to everything that we're doing, is the fact that we have not economically grown in the city in a number of years. And that is what gets us into further trouble with our, um, with our water and wastewater and such, because we could uh, basically share the love with everybody if we had more people in the town contributing. Uh, so I think that as we look at the master plan, that that has to be part of what we're looking at in the future is we have to grow, like we've committed to as a council, we wanna grow this city, we wanna develop the infill. We wanna bring businesses in, we were bringing families in, and I think we've all talked about different goals and priorities and different discussions that we need to do that, but that is a viable key, and I wanna just bring that point up, that that is how we can help protect the rates in the future. So thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yep. Thank you very much for the presentation, Diana. This is a real tough subject. This is, uh, real tough. I'm kinda lucky I've been in this industry for the last thirty-five years. So I know, uh, the process, what the city's gone through. So I'm gonna start off with is, Diana, the, uh, four years that we didn't raise the rates back between seven and, uh, eleven? Is that what, uh, is one of the reasons why we're in the situation that we're in today, that having to, uh, raise rates annually?
There are a lot of factors that, um, factor into that. That would be one of them. The other is, uh, a large, there was a large impact of the drought.
Yes, okay. And, um, if council chooses not to raise the rates this year, is, uh, that gonna put a burden on the, on the city here for next year in the future?
So as noted in the staff report, the current fiscal year, or the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget does not assume rate increases. And as you saw in the presentation, we do have net cash available for projects under all three scenarios. Of course, under the middle increases and the higher increases, that generates more revenues, which equates to more money available for projects, which puts us in a better position long-term. But in terms of, um, if they, if the council chooses to decide with zero increase, then we still have net cash available for projects, it's just less. It's not something I would recommend. You know, if council does it this year, I absolutely would recommend against doing it again next year because it's going to catch up to, um, it's gonna catch up to us.
Yes, that, okay. And, uh, option three is just to break even, correct? That's just for us to break even for, uh, running our facilities.
What do you mean by break even?
Well, uh, the, uh, seven percent and the eight percent, that's just, uh, to hold us over even?
No. So I'm trying to understand what you mean by break even.
Just, uh, keep us afloat. How about, how's that sound? Just keep us afloat?
No, 'cause under all three options, you still have net cash available for projects. Option three just provides you more cash available for projects. And what that would do, though, is equate to, um, a potentially lower increase proposed next year. If you do a zero percent increase this year, then that would likely result in a recommendation of a higher increase next year than if you went forward with the seven and eight percent rate increases respectively.
Okay. So, I know this is real tough. You know, it's saying you could pay me a little bit now or pay me a whole lot later, 'cause, uh, that's what's gonna happen. Costs, chemical costs, everything's going up, everything. And if we could do just a little bit each year, like I said, uh, between, we kept it the same for four years, and then we had to do this, and that's where we're at, the situation we're in today. If we would've just raised it a couple of dollars each year, those four years, we wouldn't be the situation that we're in today. I'd like to, um, make a recommendation that we, uh,
You're making a motion?
No, not making a motion, just recommendation, 'cause he's made a recommendation to you. I just wanna, well, all right.
Well, we have one more comment.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Sure, okay, go ahead.
Didn't mean motion by recommending.
No, just recommendation.
Express your opinion.
Okay, yeah, I'm just, I, I just, uh, like I say, we could pay a little bit now, or next year we could pay a whole lot more, 'cause it's gonna come back and it's a little each year is better than none this year, and then have to pay twice, three times more next year, or the full amount of Prop two eighteen. And that would be a real big burden on, on our, uh, senior citizens in the community. So I'd like to, uh, propose, uh, make a recommend, not a recommendation, uh, opinion. Would, yeah, my opinion would be, uh, take B, the three percent and the four percent. It's not great. I checked it out. It, it would be five dollars. It would be five dollars more. It wouldn't be ten. And I know it's a lunch, it's a prescription, it's something, but it's better spending five dollars today than having to spend fifteen or twenty dollars next year or in the future.
Thank you very much. Sir.
Through the mayor, I appreciate the questions of, of all the council and the answers. It, it helps. Uh, this is a complex problem. It's easy, I think, uh, to sit back and kick the can down the road and, uh, and watch while deferred maintenance doesn't get done and the cost to, to fix the, the system continues to increase. And it's also, uh, it was a little disheartening to find that the can was kicked down the road on the biosolids, to be honest with you. That's a, that's a a, a known issue that, uh, could have been addressed earlier. We're addressing it now. But one of the, the key comments I heard as I walked door-to-door, uh, and, and this is always important to me because this is the constituents talking, is their concern over our water rates. And certainly you've done a, a fine job talking about how much we need to increase water rates, but I've also heard from the citizens that we, that I feel I represent about their deep concern about the, uh, how high they've gone. At this point, uh, I'll wait for the motions. Um, I guess if we're rendering opinions, because the wastewater, um, study has not been, has not yet been completed, and because we are under, uh, or in negotiations with, uh, with Recology right now and the biosolids, we have no clue what that rate increase is gonna be, I would certainly, at this point, uh, have, be of the opinion that wastewater rates, we hold at zero until we get more information. And, uh, and I'm gonna let the mayor have his, his, uh,
Feel free to make the motion if you like.
I'm not gonna make the motion. Yeah, I want you to have your chance at answering questions. But, uh, as far as the water rates, uh, I'll hold off until, until Mayor Harris talks.
I'm a firm believer in, you know, pay a little now or, uh, to avoid paying a lot later. It just, uh, proper maintenance, same with your car, everything. It just makes sense to me. It's the way I would do it if I was one person sitting up here. It's the way I would do it at home. But I also think that perhaps as long as the public is aware that it will be that situation, that, uh, perhaps it would be in our best interest to literally listen and go with the zero percent for this round, pending those two, uh, items that you brought up, sir. Uh, that way we can make it more informed in choice, uh, when it comes to water rates. It's a big deal, the five dollars. Some of us are fortunate enough to, we won't even notice it, but a lot of people, it's a big deal. And, um, I think we need to send a message today that we hear that and we find that important. So that's my opinion. I'll entertain a motion if anybody has.
Through the mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, I move that we adopt a resolution setting the weight water, uh, write that again. I move that we adopt a resolution setting the water rates, uh,
Uh at a rate less than Prop two eighteen approved uh approved rates of zero effective July one. Uh twenty nineteen, meaning the rate zero, or the rate increase is zero. Option A.
Very good.
And I would, you want them separate motions or one together? Go ahead. Uh the addendum to that would be as well, the wastewater rates at a rate less than the Prop two eighteen approved approved rates. Effective July one twenty nineteen at option A, which is zero increase.
Motion for option A on both.
Yeah, second.
Second, motion and a second. All those approved?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much. You, are you just a, what is your record?
Yeah, what, what, what was your?
So Mister Cardo's is on record as as voting yes as well, so unanimous vote to keep the rates at zero. Alright, so. Let's see. We're gonna move on to public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Come on, comments on controversial items may be limited to large groups. Excuse me, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. See here. Written requests, we have one for. We already had this one, what am I, number thirteen, we're pulling that.
There's been no written request.
No written requests. Any member of the public care to comment on anything? Mister Burns, come on up. Thank you.
I don't know, you know, who's responsible for it, but going down uh Highway ninety-nine. There used to be a railroad track. Right there by Spurbeck's. And we got a huge hump in the road that you gotta slow down to about, you know, twenty miles an hour if you don't wanna. Take out the undercarriage of your vehicle. So could somebody? I mean, I would have thought that by now somebody would have done something. But it continues to peak up. And uh can the city get to the right people? To talk about that big hump?
That would be a, it's uh Highway ninety-nine, so that'd be a Caltrans, maybe I'd be happy to pass that on for you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else care to speak on it? Um we consent calendar, but I do have a question. We have items, we're gonna pull number thirteen, the request for that. We have items ten through fourteen on the calendar, however, there's a uh paragraph after number fourteen. Is that included in consent? And we only have that information in case someone wants to pull it? Or do, is anybody know? In case anybody wants to speak on it? You know what I'm talking about? Number fourteen, now, I withdraw that, never mind. So what we're gonna do is all matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or public request specific items to be discussed. Or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. As I said, we're gonna pull number thirteen. Can I have a motion on items ten through fourteen, please?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Make the motions for a consent counter, items ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
And Mister Mayor, I'm so sorry. Uh before there's approval, could we open this up to the public?
For.
The consent counter, items ten, eleven, twelve, and fourteen.
Anybody from the public wanna co- comment on ten through fourteen minus thirteen? No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, none. Alright, number thirteen is Natalie. She's on the spot.
Excuse me. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. The purpose of this staff report is to amend the executive services. Agreement for Mister Daley, Daring Gale to be appointed as the interim development services director. Mister Gale has been an employee with the city for approximately ten years. Mister Gale's deputy city manager position was eliminated eliminated as part of the fiscal year nineteen twenty budget. Mister Gale has been serving in the interim development services director position since December two thousand and eighteen, and he is overseeing many projects. I should note that the executive services employees are at will positions and have individual employee contracts. At this time, staff recommends that Mister Gale continuous interim development services director. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a speaker request here from Pat Miller. If anybody else in the public would care to speak on that, please queue up behind Pat.
Good evening, council members. Um I just have a a couple of questions cuz the staff report wasn't really. Uh clear on, and the staff report kinda indicated that. The city's gonna be paying Mister Gale for um three months for um. It for a three month salary and his accrued vacation and administrative leave. Uh because they eliminated the position he was in. And is that true that he is going to be paid that amount of money and then? Go into another city position as an interim um director of development services? And um the staff report didn't include a a salary, so is he keeping the same salary? Uh if so, what is it? And um is it an increase or a decrease from what he's making now?
Alright, Pat, as you know, this is public comment time, not question time. However, if our city attorney would care to indulge, I don't have a problem with that.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. The salary and severance portion as proposed would be included as part of that. The deputy city manager pay is higher. Mister Gale has earned his, nope, am I incorrect? Let's let Natalie add to that question then, I'm sorry.
For you, ma'am.
So Mister Gale is um as an interim development services director, he is being paid at that level. I think it's approximately sixty-seven dollars. I don't know which step is that step, uh well, there is no steps in this executive services. It's just a range, so it's approximately sixty-seven dollars. Um and the, what was the other question? The deputy city manager is paid at a lower, the range is lower than the interim or the development services director. Um was there another one?
Severance pay and.
Explain the severance process.
Pay, so the severance pay is being paid at the interim develop uh interim development services director position. He um because it's at the rate he is currently at, and it is um. As and that is part of the amendment that we are, that's part of what staff is recommending to council. Um and then he would con- he would continue in the interim role. The severance is related to the elimination of his deputy city manager position. It is an interim role, um and um at this time, we would, red staff recommends to continue at this time until there is a recruitment.
Does that help you out, Pat?
Is there a recruitment for that position, or is that Diana's?
That is going to be, that's gonna be, um we're gonna wait for that until we hire a new city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else walk up? Looking for action?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Comments. Go ahead. Comment through the mayor. Um thank you for the presentation, Natalie, and the explanation of things. Uh Mister Mayor, when we looked at the um budget and we looked at everything. Uh we looked at it through the lens of how can we maximize every dollar that we have. Uh my comments tonight will be limited on the budgetary process and what's best for the city. And not at a, not at a person or our particular personnel here at the city at all. Um through the elimination process of the deputy city manager economic development. Uh and looking to rejoin the EDC, we were able to save the city about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and receive roughly the same services that we've. Currently rece- uh are getting. Um likewise, uh I have received multiple feedback uh from people that deal with the city. On continual business uh through our uh planning department and and everything, building department. And it's, it's no joke, uh we have a department that has been in, for lack of better words, in triage for quite a while. And uh we need to extend and bring some love to that department. And start getting that to being a department that can take care of the needs of the city. Uh people have asked questions of how come they can go to other municipalities and things go through rather quickly. Um to, you know, just just the service we're getting here. Uh I had someone just recently that had been trying to reach out. And we are uh understaffed and and the work's just not getting done at the customer level that we all want to bring. I know that I have had uh uh side conversations with our in uh interim city manager about. What would be the possibility of outsourcing this? A lot of other cities do that. What do we get? Uh when we outsource, we get uh professionals that come in, professionals that probably have at least ten to twenty years worth of experience. Uh they have teams at their uh at their side that can step in, so we can start expediting business. To do the business of the city. One point is we've asked ever since uh uh I came on the council early on. We started asking for the fee rate study, and we've asked for it multiple times. And I asked for it thirty days ago to be at this meeting, and it's not here yet because we don't have the resources. We don't have the manpower. Just as with the elimination of the deputy city manager position and the economic developer uh position. There are savings, uh PERS-related, benefits-related, everything. To immediately start outsourcing this department to get a team of professionals in here. To meet the needs of our citizens in the city, and it will help us budgetarily as well. Uh I understand the need for the contract addendum because uh this person has been uh filling this role for about six months. Um but like with many other positions we have here in the city, um it's it's a limited position. And uh Ms. Langley, may I ask you a question, please? Um again, we we've had other conversations about is it possible to outsource this and. Other cities do outsource their their departments, correct?
Correct.
And how long would it approximately take you to, I mean, would it take a couple of weeks? Would it take four weeks to possibly? Get someone in here to take care of our department that needs help?
Um, you know, it depends. We have a couple of contract planners that we utilize right now. I'd have to check with them on their availability and the resources that they have available to come in and supplement the department. I will note, we do have um other staff members within the existing development services department, so it wouldn't be. Um outsourcing the entire department. It would be supplementing the services we already have.
Yes.
And so, uh I, you know, I can't say how quickly I could bring resources on board. It would be a direct impact to services available. For a period of time and that um our services would um would take a hit during that time. Um but I, we do have some resources available, and if they're not available, then there are other companies that we can reach out to. To bring in for supplemental services.
Okay, thank you. Um looking at it from a budgetary standpoint, uh we have to cash out the severance. We have to cash out the vacation that's accrued. Uh there is tax or there is savings in outsourcing. And as we know, everything ends with our fiscal year of June thirty. So uh as all of our other limited-term employees, uh I I. Understand the the resol- or the the resolution for the amendment, but it needs to be limited term certain, and I would propose. Uh June thirty to end and coincide with our current fiscal year. And yes, there will be impact uh immediately, but it should be short-lived if we contract out with the right firm. Within a matter of weeks, which should be up and running with more resources than we have. And you are correct, I was not talking about the rest of our staff. They're they're doing fine. It's just w- we need. More resources in here, so we need that experience that is a decade plus. That we're gonna have from a contractor. There's gonna be savings, and I would propose um. As we look at this, to actually have it be a limited term and the interim um position. Conclude on June thirty, twenty nineteen.
So let me just note, if the council decides to end at June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, you actually don't need this amendment.
With the Mister Mayor, the amendment's not needed, so as far as I'm, my opinion.
That's approved.
Yeah, with what I proposed, it contradicts.
From the council.
Through the mayor. I am concerned about what's going on in our development services um department. Um I know that uh there are issues uh that aren't necessarily. Stuck on one person in regards to the old Feather River Mills property and it's languishing out there. And uh I know that that particular developer is probably, I would assume, getting very. Close to the wits end. It's been a long time, and we can't seem to get off top dead center. I know there are some things going on, but. Um it's my understanding today that there that there are still issues. I also understand through our conversation that we've, we're losing someone out of the planning department.
Potentially.
Yes, potentially. So I I I agree with Councilman Shaw. I think, you know, the the need for us to get some additional help inside our community. Develop or development services prob- um department. Uh to me is something I've voiced in this council chambers before. Um and I I. I I support the fact that we need to get somebody and get some some help in here. And I think we need to do it as quickly as possible. There are fee studies. Uh we have this accessory dwelling unit issue that had that has popped up. Doesn't seem like we were supposed to be collecting fees. Then I guess we did, but then we didn't. I'm not sure what's going on. It's confusing. Uh and as a, as a decision maker, um I don't really wanna be confused when I'm sitting up here.
So so I would just like to note um that the current interim development services director, as previously noted, started around December. The previous development services director left to go to be city manager of another agency. And so a lot of these issues were were issues prior to. And um so it's difficult for anybody in that position cuz you have a lot of projects that have been hanging out there for a little while.
I absolutely acknowledge that, and and this is in no way focused on any one person. I'm speaking about the department. The department concerns me because as we talked earlier, a key to water rates could be development. Do we have the staff? Do we have the ability to to push these projects through in a timely fashion? Um and I don't think that we do. Uh I think we need, we need to bolster that department. I think we need to do it as soon as we can.
Okay, ma'am.
Through the mayor, thank you. Um I I agree, I agree with um the two fellow council members that just spoke about the. The I guess emergency needs in the developmental services department. Um. I I. Um there's things that um, it's a city council that we have. Confidential conversations that we have to abide for by and um and so one of the things. That as I'm considering from the perspective of what I've learned so far in the last several months. Is um how critical and important the city manager. And Diana, you've been doing a fantastic job working through so many um things that we've had to work through, which. Um we've made made some strong headways, and we're very close to, I think. The place where our new city manager's gonna. Crossing my fingers, folks, that we get a a a person on board. And. Um I'm hoping that this person that we end up selecting or hiring. Um has the opportunity to bring in some ideas and thoughts in here too. I'm not sure that at this moment, I I'm fully interested in outsourcing, as you mentioned. Um because I, it seems to me we're so close to, hopefully, if everything goes well. Close to the decision of bringing in a city manager, and hopefully that individual may have. Some thoughts, um may have some connections, some other ideas that. Could probably resolve this, hopefully, within a a month or two, and I. And I, I know that development is critical. It is not, it has not occurred. We've suffered through the fact that our city has not developed over the years. But here, what I know firmly is that I can't change the past right now. But I can definitely make the impact towards what's needed now in, in the future. I'm sorry, Sean, was that something that your eyes hurt or I was just wondering?
Not at all.
Okay. So what I'm saying is that I, I think that we can keep who we have at this moment. Let's move forward with the city manager, make that decision thereafter. That's, um, where I'm leaning towards at this moment. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification. When I was talking about outsourcing, I, I'm duly looking at the new city manager coming in. That city manager needs to be able to do the evaluation and decide whether or not it's best to outsource or to do a full recruitment on their terms and it be a level playing field. And anyone in our current, uh, department would be eligible to apply. But depending on what the, uh, new city manager's preference is on that. But it wouldn't be a, you know, we're gonna do this for four years. This is to get us through to that next, to think about the future because right now we, we have a, a huge need that we can't meet and we need to, to fix it. And so I wanted to clarify, it wasn't looking years. It may only be six months, but there's budgetary savings and there's more, um, potential with the knowledge and expertise of an outside firm.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Um, Diana, do we know there's gonna be budgetary savings using an outside firm?
I don't know that because I don't know what the proposal price will be or how much, uh, time they'll need to spend within the department.
Okay, and using a, a outside firm, they, they know, they're not gonna know the citizens of our community, the developers and the contractors that come in here every day, which our staff knows. As folks come in and they, they, they have a working relationship with, with the folks that we have working with us. I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Espando- Espandola and, uh, just keep it the way it is and let the city manager make the decision, he or she. You know, what's, what's another six months or however long it's gonna take? If we have, if everything works right, we should have a city manager within the next two to three months. So, uh, I'd like to, I'm gonna agree with, uh, Grace and, uh, have it stay like it is, myself personally.
Through the mayor and respecting your opinion, but I've spoken confidentially with two developers who are local. They're frustrated and these are our constituents now that are frustrated with the inability to get product out of our, our development services department. Again, I'm not focusing on any one person. I'm talking about what's going on in the department right now. And, and to wait another six months and tell these prospective developers that, you know, we're gonna go status quo for a while, I don't feel like I'm doing my job if I tell them that respectfully.
All right. All that.
Through the mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want to say that, um, I, I, Councilwoman Boomgarden, I, I, I know that you're, we're, I think we're equally frustrated in that process, that where things are at at this moment. I just don't, I, I don't know if we can turn it around in immediately, within two, three weeks. That's, and, you know, to make this change, um, I don't know. I don't know the full answer, but that's why I, I, I don't feel like, um, by con- maintaining it, yes, it sounds like staying status quo. But I'm also knowing more information that our constituents may know at times that we're close to that place with our city mana- new, hopefully new city manager that, and hopefully we can resolve some of these major issues that haven't been cared for as well as they needed to be. Thank you.
All right, regarding this item. And this is further comment? Let's see here. With no further comment, we've already had public comment, we have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, if I may interrupt before there's a motion.
Yes.
And just to remind the council, you have three options tonight. Approve the amendment, approve the amendment with modifications, or don't approve the amendment. If you don't approve the amendment, it will not address certain contractual language that is in the current document with regards to how CalPERS is handled. Not that I'm urging a particular policy matter either direction, but I did wanna flag that item for you. Thank you.
So essentially we can, we have, what, the amendment includes the personnel action and the initiation of another agreement.
Yes, so the amendment would essen- pardon me, the amendment would clear up that language. So if you were to prove it as was or as modified, it would help resolve that particular issue from a legal perspective.
This is gonna get complicated then.
I do have another question through the mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Perhaps it's for Ms. Langley or Ms., or through Natalie. In regards to the payment for the severance on that issue, the contract is for deputy city manager, but we're paying severance at the interim development services manager? Is that what I heard? Why would we do that? The contract, if the contract's with the deputy city manager.
So the position he's been holding for the last several months is the interim development services director? And so it talks about the current rate of pay?
Thank you. Just wanted to clear that up.
Through the mayor unless you have.
No, go ahead, I'm reading.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the executive service employee, employee employment agreement with the change that it ceases, uh, contractually on June thirty, twenty nineteen.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Question, may I or not? Ms. Langley, if we, if we opted tonight to, to secure the services of some help in our development services department, how long would it take for you to get that person onboard oriented and functional to certain projects that are, are high in the queue?
So that's a very tough question to respond to. In terms of bringing somebody onboard, um, I would reach out to the two current contract planners that we have to see their availability as to whether or not they can increase their available, availability to Yuba City. If they're not, I would need to reach out to another firm to see availability. In terms of bringing them up to speed, that's a completely different question. I'm not sure that I can respond to that tonight because there are, um, the development services department is working on some very complex projects such as the Bog Stewart Master Plan, which we have the workshop, uh, joint workshop next Monday night. Um, that project's, you know, a few years in the making. Also the Feather River Mills site, which is, you know, many years. So in terms of bringing somebody up to speed, um, one of those consultants is the former, uh, community development director for the city. Um, but he, he has limitations in terms of the number of hours that he can work. So I can't necessarily give you a response tonight, but I would try to make sure that we bring the resources on as quickly as possible and, um, do what we can to bring them up to speed. You know, in, in addition to the remaining staff within the department, we have our, our planning manager here tonight, Vikram. He's less than sixty days with the city, so he doesn't have that historical or institutional no- knowledge either. And so regardless, we would be relying a lot on, um, Mr. Cook to the extent that he would want to do it. And then, um, you know, we have Brian Millar and then if necessary, I could reach out to other resources as well.
Thank you.
Well, I, I think that there could be, uh, a period of time. I think that addresses Councilwoman Espandola's. I, I like the time certain, I like the opportunity for the city manager to come in. I think your point is well-taken on a, on a clean slate as far as, as a competitive, uh, hiring process or whatever he or she, city manager, um, in the direction or who they may even have, um, that, that they feel comfortable or confident with. But I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Councilman.
At this point, pick a date, July fifteenth, June thirty, July thirty-first. Ms. Langley, what would you feel more comfortable with? July fifteenth?
Well, you're putting me, you're putting me in a very tough position.
No.
Well, I mean.
No. I would.
Of course, the more time you give me, the better off I'm going to be able to bring in resources. So I'll just leave it at that. Whatever, whatever timeframe you give me, I will strive to make it work.
Okay.
I would propose, uh, August thirty-first, two months. If you would indulge me, sir, or not.
Okay. August thirty-first. I'll second.
All right. Are you, will, will be clear on what we're proposing here? Yes, so everything is, as we've discussed, assumes the interim, continues with the interim role until August thirty-first rather than June thirtieth.
Thank you for, for adding the timeframe, I'm really, um, thankful for that. Learning how our government system works so fast, snail time. Do, do you mind extending perhaps, just asking, September thirtieth, September fifteen? Then.
No, is it no or no, you don't mind?
As no, I will not.
Okay.
And do you mind if I ask why you think fifteen days or thirty days more would be too much? I'm, I'm just wondering.
It, it goes back to exactly what I said as far as transitioning, getting the department to where it's more productive with the professionals there and giving the new city manager a clean slate. Because if we continue through those, we could have a new, with the, the candidates, we could have a new city manager in September and it needs to be a clean slate for the new city manager to decide what they wanna do.
Then I, I misunderstood. I thought that perhaps, um, Councilwoman Boomgarden helped me unclarif- clarify this. I thought perhaps that you mentioned that the city manager could then make that decision. Hopefully in part to that, it was, did I misunderstand you?
Well, I think the, no, I, well, help me, let me hope, um, clear it up for you. My intent is, is to have some transition time right now. This doesn't preclude our interim city manager from being, beginning the process of researching contract employees now, but it puts a time certain on an interim position. And that's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, through the mayor.
Yes.
So there is a motion on the floor with regards to, uh, August thirtieth or the last day of August. So as, there is an updated resolution that has been circulated to you and that is on the record and is also available to the public that mentions the severance items as well. My recommendation is if you're inclined to approve it with an end date, is you also authorize the city manager to include that language in the proposed agreement with you this evening. So it's in the agreement itself.
Who made the, who made the motion?
Yeah, I concur with that.
Okay. And whoever made the second, do they concur with that as well?
Yes.
Okay. So we have that down? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, two to three. Thank you very much.
Mayor, can I have a roll call just to make sure we're clear for the record?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Boomgarden?
Aye.
Councilmember Espandola?
No.
Councilmember Cardoza?
No.
And Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Turnaround number fifteen, accessory dwelling units presented by Vikram Chima.
There's no, uh, visual aid for this one, so we're just gonna have a conversation. My name is Vikram Chima, uh, I'm the new planning manager. I've been, uh, working in the city of Yuba City for about sixty days now. I started my career here under Dennis Cook, um, about, uh, X number of years ago, I won't be so specific. And, uh, I moved on to, um, practice, uh, city planning in the Bay Area and in Los Angeles and then, uh, got my graduate degree on the East Coast. So what we're here to talk about today is, um, uh, to facilitate the construction of, uh, diverse and affordable housing stock in the city of Yuba City. And that diverse and affordable housing stock comes in the form of what we call ADUs or accessory dwelling units, what, uh, has been, um, traditionally called a granny flat or a second unit. So in order to facilitate, um, the construction of these units, we have, uh, recommended that we, uh, as the city of Yuba City, waive the development impact fees and connection fees that are currently related to accessory dwelling units. Right now, an accessory dwelling unit, um, does have a fee associated with it if it's, uh, constructed. And in order to simply increase the stock of, uh, affordable housing units and to use the existing infrastructure that we have in the city, we are going to try and eliminate some of the obstacles, uh, the majority of the obstacles, which is, uh, the financial obstacle, um, to, uh, an accessory, uh, accessory dwelling unit, which is the development impact fee which it is currently subject to. Um, and you can see, uh, the summary, the subject of your, uh, staff report is, uh, accessory dwelling unit fees. The recommendation is to waive all city collected development impact fees, um, for new ADUs. And you can see that, uh, currently these fees, um, total to about twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars per accessory dwelling unit. Really kept it short and simple. Really, this is a direction that we've, uh, I've been, you know, that we've heard from, uh, from my interim director, uh, Darren Gale, as a direction city council wanted to go in order to move quickly and decisively to address the housing stocking issues, the housing stock issues that was resulted from, uh, the campfire and, um, from other circumstances, uh, general rising prices in the state of California for housing. The state of California has gone and recently in twenty seventeen, um, uh, adopted some new standards for ADUs, reducing, um, obstacles that would normally be associated with, uh, the construction of ADUs, uh, particularly, uh, development impact fees, um, connection fees, also some things that are related to, um, parking requirements that sometimes, uh, accessory dwelling units are required to provide off-street parking requirements for new units. So, um, basically what we're loo- we're looking to do here is, um, waive the fees and, um, uh, default to state law, um, in cases, uh, where, uh, were, were related to the development impact fee and the connection fee.
That it?
That is it, yes.
All right.
Do you have any questions or concerns or you can open up to, uh, uh, there, there's obviously, um, I know there's at least one person in the audience who's here to comment.
I'd love to hear, uh, any public comment, if any. Any, there you go. Come on up.
Thank you, uh, mayor and council. My name is Eric Gins, I'm a Sutter County resident, uh, business owner in Yuba City. Uh, I'm a building designer. Um, and so I deal with a lot of different, uh, interest in this concept, uh, on a weekly basis. I think it'd be a very, uh, good move to eliminate some fees. Uh, I hear constantly from developers and other contractors and builders and, um, homeowners that they say, I can't do it, I wanna do it, but I can't do it because of the fees are prohibitive. I would encourage, uh, the recommendation that Vikram has put together. I would be in favor of that. I would also be in favor of learning a little bit more about and developing a strategy to comply and figure out how we can deal with existing, um, setback requirements, um, building zoning, uh, adjacent structures, property line, as it relates to ADU specifically. I think that needs to be addressed immediately if we do this because that's gonna be the next question that is asked as we develop this and move forward. I've got six clans sitting waiting right now that say, hey, I live in the city limits, I wanna do this, I wanna build this, but I don't have a clear path forward. So I'm in favor of, there's lots of people in favor of it. The state has even come down today, I think there was another proposition and some legislation that came out today, that continued the advancement of the ADU proponent. So, uh, it's current act of an ongoing and it, I think it would be a great thing that the city would, uh, benefit from, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else care to comment? All right, bring it back to council.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Have we, have we permitted any accessory dwelling units here previously?
No, not to my knowledge.
Okay. How would you, I mean, not to your knowledge, but you've only been here a few days.
I'm referring to my interim development director.
So uh not to my knowledge, in the six months since I've been the director of the department, um, when the question came in from the city council, I have been at Boy Scout, uh, Boy Scout camp this weekend or this week, and so I have not been able to go in and do an audit uh myself to determine if something's happened over the past few years. But uh we will do that and see if we've had any permits pulled for an accessory dwelling unit since the law had changed both in twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen is when laws have changed to determine to see if there was any accessory dwelling unit per- uh permit pulled within the city. And if the direction from the city council is such, we could refund them those funds, those fees.
Okay, thank you.
See the mayor?
Yep.
So um, on these, so uh they're not, they're, they're gonna build these and they're not gonna be future B and Bs, are they?
Um, B and B regulations are, can be locally confined. Uh, I mean, they can be controlled by local ordinance. Um, so uh ADUs uh among their many multitudes of uses are considered to be valuable rental properties for very low, low and moderate income individuals. Um, so there's the possibility that you have a uh individual moderate income living there. Um, there is a possibility where you do have a rental unit for a short-term Airbnb um property. That would be something that would have to be regulated. Um, I might defer to the city attorney on that one, but I believe that might be regulated by local more constrictive uh constraints.
Yes, the, the planning manager is absolutely correct. Currently, we do not have restrictions in place on Airbnbs and other such short-term uses less than thirty days. But if the council were inclined to do so, it could update its regulations to include it, consistent with state law.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment? Alright, I entertain a motion.
I got a lifesaver.
Through the mayor. I move we adopt a resolution waiving all city collected development impact fees for new ADUs.
There you go, well said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number sixteen, Feather River Parkway Phase Two plans by Ben Moody.
Alright, am I up? Alright, good evening. Mayor, members of the city council. So um item beha- before you is um a nice little project that uh we're anxious to get moving forward. So um in two thousand two, uh the city put together a strategic plan to deal with the um Feather River Parkway area, which is about a hundred and sixty-two, a hundred and seventy-two acres east of the levee between the river and the levee north of the Ten Street Bridge. And so with that, they obtained a grant that in twenty thirteen, they finalized Phase One of our, of our um Feather River Parkway, which was um about ninety acres or so that put in the bike paths and the walking trails and access to the beach. And then in that same year, we obtained approximately one point seven million dollar grant for Phase Two. And so since that time, we've worked on the um design and, and really um worked through the permitting process. With it being in the river, the waterway, Army Corps and multiple jurisdictions, it's taken uh really that long to get the permits. And so recently, we finalized those permits and um we've extended the deadline with those grant funds. And so we're um anxious to get moving with approving those plans and specifications and putting the project out to bid. And so the action tonight is really to approve the plans and specifications to utilize that grant fund to put in um the various bike trails. There's a, a pavilion, another access to the beach up at the north end. And there will be a bathroom put in and some other general picnic tables and benches and various improvements. And so with that, staff is anticipating engineers estimate around one point five million dollars. We have an ad alternate in there where uh there's a concrete ADA eight-foot wide um concrete path, um to have some access. So we'll see how the, with the bid environment being so um uncertain, especially with this type of job, we put it as an ad alternate. So um, so with that, there is a, a required match, a hundred and six thousand dollars. This project's been programmed in your capital improvement budget for quite some time. And so um uh with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and we're recommending that you move forward with the um recommendation.
Any member of the public care to comment? Alright, council?
If there are no comments, I'm ready to uh motion. Okay, uh, my, I motioned to, as I put them in my mouth, sorry. I motioned to adopt a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the Feather River Parkway Phase Two project and authorizing the advertisement for bids on the project.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, fiscal year twenty nineteen twenty, citywide sole source and professional services purchases by someone who just turned fifty years old today. Happy birthday, Spencer.
Happy birthday, Spencer.
Thank you, that could be a rumor.
Feel any difference?
I don't have a bio, a bio prepared for you.
Welcome to AARP.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I bring before you the citywide sole source and professional services purchased, uh, purchases for fiscal year two thousand nineteen twenty. Uh, this is an annual uh staff report that councils have been um, had been requesting for since about two thousand eight. Uh, this is, staff report is not um for a single purchase. It is uh rather a collection of many purchases staff is anticipating in fiscal year nineteen twenty. This item is intended to streamline. Uh, each item on the staff report would normally have to come to council separately otherwise. Uh, this will bring uh further awareness to the types of large purchases the city departments make overall. So items on this list have these things on the slide in common future, they're all future purchases. Uh, they have a high likelihood the invoices with uh the vendors listed on the attachment will total more than fifty thousand dollars and they do not require a formal bid process in the coming year. So they got on the list um in these ways, uh for the sole source and professional services items. These uh are either the only known provider, the only responsive vendor uh to, to this point, or these vendors have specialized knowledge or expertise in the area for which we're using them. The uh multi-year agreements that are on the list, such as landscape by stencil, uh, were authorized by council, council for multiple years. So we've, staff has added them to this report, just to be more clear, uh, um, make a for, more complete list of the purchases that, large purchases that we expect in the coming year. Existing systems, uh, vendors that service existing systems uh that have proprietary technology or uh we're being consistent, uh, for instance, uh, excuse me, for instance, John Deere or Spillman or Data nine-one-one. Spillman and Data nine, nine-one-one, there are no other vendors that work on, on these systems for the police department. And John Deere, we, we own a lot of green equipment and the uh, these tractors are, are taken to the, the John Deere dealer, parts are purchased from a John Deere dealers, et cetera, for, for maintenance. Piggyback, I just wanted to add that uh staff does verify value when, when we're, when we're piggybacking another contract. So there's CMAAS, there's state contracts out there. Uh, there are, there are agencies that have already uh done, done the work to search out the best price and we're happy to uh not utilize staff time in reinventing that wheel. And then there are vendors on here that, that we, we put on, staff put on, just because these vendors just uh fulfill a need that's very common throughout the year and they're very, have been in the past very successful at navigating through the three quotes process. So they've been the competitive bidder. And it's not to say we aren't gonna continue to vet them, but this will be uh very routine vendors that don't have to come before this council on agenda items uh over and over.
Mayor, just a point of clarification. So in the staff report, we actually don't have Valley Truck and Tractor listed in the staff report.
That is, thank you very much, uh, interim city manager Langley. I have removed that, that item from the staff report, but it's still a great example. Yes, um, and I want to point out that there is this nuance that happens when we're making purchases, especially when we use a vendor a lot throughout the year. So we have this fifty thousand dollar and zero cent limitation that the city manager can authorize. And then above that, one penny above that, it comes before council. So it just happens sometimes throughout the year that one department or a couple of departments will utilize a vendor up to say forty-nine thousand dollars. And then another department might use, might come in and have a two thousand dollar need with that same vendor. Well, by the rules of our purchasing policy, the person that wants to go spend two thousand dollars or their department that wants to spend two thousand dollars has to bring that item before council to stay within the purchasing policy practice. And so that nuance has also um had, is, is a reason that staff will br- put items on this, on this list. They don't know exactly that we're gonna spend the amount of money that's on here, but the likelihood is there and, and in the, in the, so they add it to the report. So with that, I will attempt to answer any questions.
Any member of the public care to comment on that? Alright, how about council comments or a motion? Or questions?
I have a comment, uh, or more of a request, um, is that reviewing the entire um list, um, and some questions were answered, which was um helpful prior to the meeting today. Um, but the total amount fiscal impact is um, you know, seven million dollars. And so I hadn't made the request that if we can have a mid-year um, reporting on the status of some of the funding because it's not clear if the funds are utilized um all the way through or, or nothing, you know, from now, from July, excuse me, to December perhaps, right? It, it could be all used or none or partial, whatever that may be. And have, do we have a system that is easy to monitor that within, you know, a few, you know, clicks of the mouse on the computer?
We do not, but the finance department will make it look easy.
I love that answer.
We should be able to bring, we should be able to come back to you by uh, if it, if it works for uh the council, maybe a, a January uh update, either uh, I'm not sure if you would want to see a, a full staff report uh brought to council, or if you would wanna see memos in your box or something on the consent calendar.
I think that, you know, what I'm most interested is to know um of these um vendors that we have continued relationship because they've met the threshold of quality, what have you, that we set for them um, to continue with us, is that I, I, I wanna know those where we're at and if there's money that we can release to utilize for other things. You know, so that's seven million dollars is a big drop in the budget for us and so.
So perhaps I can add some clarification. So these funds are not gonna be encumbered with the staff report. So that's the total value of the total estimates
Oh, thank you.
For all of these, all these vendors. And uh, the, the funds that uh are, would be associated with these purchases have already been planned for by the departments.
Okay.
And so, and you may even actually have two vendors on this list that, that may be competing for the same business and only one would be utilized. But the one that is utilized uh would, would have to come before council and it's considered a routine purchase. It's not, doesn't require a formal bid and so uh staff put it on the list in the, in, to streamline and be uh transparent.
Thank you for clarifying that. I didn't read that well. It wasn't clear to me in the report, um, and I, I missed that. Um, it's just an actual projection of potential estimate of purchase, but not tied to a specific budget.
Correct.
And so I'm interested to know the, connected to the budget and where we're at. That's, that was my question more so of mid-year review. Okay, does that make?
Councilmember, we will be happy to uh come back in January.
Okay, thank you, Spencer, and happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Alright, anybody else? Alright.
Through the mayor.
For a motion.
I'll make a motion and we adopt a resolution pre-authorizing the city manager designated enter into citywide sole source and professional services purchases from July one twenty nineteen through June thirty twenty twenty for specified items based on each purchase recommendation being in the best interest of the city.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you. Moving on to number eighteen, for an upgrade application software for city's financial payroll and utility billing system. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening. Um, like you said, I am bringing for you today the upgrade of our city financial payroll and utility billing software. Um, just as a side note to latch on to our previous presentation there, this particular company is actually part of our fifty K staff report from the prior year. Only the language is for only maintenance and this is an upgrade. Um, so that's, that's why we're bringing it to you today, um, just for clarification. So a little bit of background, um, we've been using this software um several different forms since nineteen ninety-seven. Um, over that time, it's changed names, it's changed owners. And um, we currently refer to it as Penimation. You've probably heard that in other presentations that I've brought before you. That name actually hasn't been used in a very long time, but that's how we refer to it. Um, the last time we've actually upgraded this software was seven years ago. Um, and the vendor is actually requiring us to upgrade to a current version in order to maintain uh maintenance, uh, which is very important. So the current version of the software that is available is the, the final version that is gonna be allowed to be on-premise, basically be installed on our service here. Um, all future versions will be cloud only, so it's important for us to move to this version while we still can. So as I mentioned, this was part of uh the s- previous staff report for the fifty K. But just to clarify, since vendor is, in this case, Central Square Technologies, is the only company authorized and able to upgrade the software, staff is recommending that the council authorizes the city manager to enter to agreement with Central Square Technologies of Lake Mary, Florida for the amount of fifty-four thousand six hundred and four dollars to upgrade the city's financial payroll and utility billing software to the most current version and provide training for staff by finding it is the best interest of the city to do so. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Alright, any member of the public care to comment? Anything? Okay, anything from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I motion, um authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with this Central Square Technologies of Lake Mary, Florida for the amount of fifty-four thousand six hundred and four dollars to upgrade the financial payroll and utility billing application software to the most current version and provide training by finding that the best interest of the city to do so.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Vice.
That's all yours.
We'll give the second to Mr. Boomgarden.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion precarious, thank you. Moving on to number nineteen, same thing from Brian, or same person. Brian, update audiovisual equipment on the city council chambers here at city hall.
Alright, so no presentation for this one either, um, because basically everything that we're asking to upgrade is right in front of you. Everything you hear, everything you see in presentation is what we're looking to upgrade. Um, so this meeting space is used not only for council chambers, for council meetings, um, but for several different boards and commissions as well as internal trainings and other civic events. Um, the audio in this chambers here was last updated in twenty ten. Uh, the video was updated in twenty fourteen. Now, over that time, technology has changed, it's improved, and a lot of our equipment is actually starting to show its age. Um, you can hear it when you hit buttons, makes a noise. You can probably hear some of the equipment humming in the background. So it's, it doesn't have a whole lot of life left in it. Um, so our goal of this project is really to just enhance these meetings, that we want to make sure we have a proper audio and video quality for presentations. So everybody in the audience can hear everything that you're saying properly, but it's also for the audience that's not here. So the better audio performance we have, the better recordings we get for people that are watching it after the fact. So s- we're going out looking for this and staff has found it very difficult to actually find vendors that are capable of doing this type of work. It's a very specialized field and people that do this type of work in a government setting um for these type of meeting spaces is. for these type of meeting spaces is few and far between. We've worked with several vendors in the past, mainly from Bay Area and Sacramento, and they just tend to be very hard to get a hold of and get out and work on our systems when we do need them. So they've been very unreliable. So we went out searching for another vendor, and we found Kim Cross Tripath Technologies out of Chico. They've been very receptive to us. They've come out onsite many times to look at what we have, give recommendations on what we could do and what we should do with this space to make things better. And we actually entered into an agreement with them to actually design a proposal, which is part of the staff report. So we paid them to come in, look at what we're doing, and design a, you know, whole package for delivering what we're looking for. So we like Tripath. They're local. As far as we're concerned, they're local. They're very attentive to our needs, and they're really very willing to work with the city, which is important for us. That's been something, for some reason, it's very hard to find for our size, I guess. And the other point I wanted to make is just the equipment itself is based off of CMAS pricing, so it's part of a competitive contract already. And staff has gone out and verified that the pricing that's in the proposal is consistent with market pricing. So we do believe we're getting a good value out of that. So with that, staff is recommending that the council awards a purchase of equipment and services to update the audio/video equipment in the council chambers at city hall to Tripath Technology Group of Chico, California, in the amount of $70,061, finding that it's in the best interest of the city to do so. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Through the mayor, is the screen that you guys are proposing, or staff is proposing, bigger than the one that's up there?
It is equivalent to what is up there. So it's moving from, this is a rear projection screen, to an LED television screen. It'll be much brighter, much crisper. We'll basically take away the screen, fill it in with wood, and then mount the screen in front of it. So you'll have an equivalent-sized screen. Our goal is to make it more readable from across the room. So people from anywhere within the chambers here will be able to enjoy the presentations.
Is there any thought or chance to make it bigger? I'm not Spencer's age, and it's hard to see from over here sometimes.
Going bigger becomes cost prohibitive. The size we're looking at is actually quite expensive, going any larger doubles or triples the price. We're looking at kind of the max size to be within a reasonable cost. The TVs that we're looking at, the TV that we're looking at is a commercial TV as well. So it's designed for longer live, heavier usage, so it's not your typical residential TV that may only last a couple of years. So we're, you know, trying to plan on making it last.
Perfect. Thank you.
No problem.
Through the mayor. I know just a little bit about audio and video. So have you looked at going to a video wall? Because you're talking about just mounting basically an LCD TV up there. And, you know, I'm used to working with and seeing, I mean, that entire wall could be basically the size of an iPad. There are little screens that make one big screen. Did you even talk to them about that? Because you could utilize the entire space and get a cost of what that would look, because that would accommodate what you're after, you know, to where we had bigger format.
That is an option, and this proposal isn't set in stone as far as individual items, so that's something we can ask them about as well, as long as it works within the same cost structure. We didn't look at it in particular, just because we're trying to stay within this general area without doing too much major construction, because that just increases the cost as well. The problem we have with more TVs is the support structure needs to be reinforced to carry the weight.
Yeah, actually, they're pretty light. The only other question I have is, are we going to have Dolby THX for Star Wars Night on May 4th?
I wish.
Okay. It's 8:30. I had to lighten it up a little bit.
Through the mayor. Is, a quick question. Is this the first time we've upgraded the system?
It is not, no.
Okay.
No, like I said, we did update the audio in 2010. I did some video updates in 2014. 2014 is mainly the cameras and the video recording equipment. I believe we did update the rear projection projector at that time, but most of the equipment is dated.
No problem.
I'd say the wiring, things like that, probably original.
Okay. I was just wondering if we, this the first time or not. Okay. Thank you.
Very good.
I'll do the mayor.
Nope. We have to get a public comment.
Yeah.
And I have.
I was going to say, I can speak after public comment. Thank you. Pat Miller again. You know, all those things sound great and wonderful, but I've been coming to these meetings for a number of years, and I think your sound system is great. The board is not bad at all. Sometimes it is a little hard to see. But $70,000 when you have a tight budget, I think that's money that could be better spent elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else from the public care to comment? All right, back to council.
I like the idea that you're bringing forward these upgrades. I do ask that if we can, because vision-wise, it's tough to sometimes really see well from the projection that we have now. If there's an opportunity to go, I know you've mentioned that if we were to go bigger, but there's multiple screens that you can also attach and then still have a large enough surface area, you know, to show clarity. But my ask is that we get something that is going to be visually easy if I, from here to see and anywhere across the room. And then the other part is, I often hear from constituents or just other members, maybe other elected officials as well, on the videotaping and the quality of the video. Is, so we, it's sometimes good and sometimes not good, or is there, have you had any feedback?
My concern with the video quality has been the lighting in this room.
Yeah.
We have poor lighting and a dark background, so it really does not lend itself to a video recording. It's something we want to do in the future, we just didn't have the budget to do it during this project. So at some point in the future, we may bring back an upgrade to the lighting. I don't know how much people like the wood green, but it really doesn't help video recording. That's what you tend to see, the greeniness of the pictures. We have HD cameras, but you're not getting an HD-quality picture because of the low light that's being caused by the lack of lighting and the dark backgrounds.
Yeah. Do you know how many people watch our meetings by chance? Do you keep track of that?
I do. It varies. We put up each item individually, so each item has its own count. Typically, there are 20 to 30 views per item, per meeting, is where we're at.
So we're not trending? We're not trending? Is that what you're telling me?
Not quite. We're working on that.
Do we need to create our own hashtag or something to?
Possibly.
Get there? Okay. Anyway, I'm interested in having us improve the quality, so thank you. I'm done.
Comment? Yeah, we can take a motion.
Hey, through the mayor, I'd like to make staff's recommendation of updating audio/video equipment in the council chambers at city hall.
There is a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed would be me. And then we will go to number 20.
Thank you.
Sutter County Board of Supervisors' use of city council chambers, presented by Diana. Welcome.
Thank you, Terrell. All right. This item is a joint use agreement between Sutter County and Uba City for the use of the council chambers. So as background, Sutter County interim administrator Steve Smith, who's here in the audience tonight, approached the city regarding the need for a facility that is furnished with the equipment and amenities necessary for them to broadcast and record their public meetings. So this would be related to the board of supervisor meetings and their planning commission. I will say this item dates back even further than that, though. This is something that the county and the city, there were discussions related to this going back, as far as I know, 2007. I'm not sure prior to that, but this is something that's been kind of hanging out there for a little while. So in the staff report, there's a joint use agreement in which some of the items noted in the joint use agreement is that the county will develop additional parking in the vacant area south of city hall within six months of the effective date of the agreement, and they've actually are starting that contract. County staff would be trained on the audio and visual equipment necessary to record the meeting so that they could operate it themselves. The county would make intermittent temporary cosmetic alterations to properly identify the facility as the meeting place for the board of supervisors. And so this would be related to covering the seal that's behind the dais with a county seal. I know there's been a lot of discussions back and forth in terms of, you know, placing signage on the front of the council chambers that are identified as the board of supervisors' chambers. That is, my understanding is that the county understands that that would not be recommended by the city, nor changes to the signage on these glass wall between the foyer and the council chambers, that these would truly be intermittent temporary alterations to identify the county meetings during the time of the meeting. And then another important factor is that either party may terminate the agreement upon 60 days prior written notice. In terms of fiscal impact, the county would pay $1,000 a month. $500 would go to the technology replacement fund, and $500 would go to city hall facility maintenance fund, as our custodians would be maintaining this facility. So with that, the recommendation is to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Sutter County for the use of the council chambers for two board of supervisor meetings and two planning commission meetings per month. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the dais? Any public comment? All right. None in both directions. I'll entertain a motion.
Oh, actually, I was waiting to see if there was any comments from the public.
Okay, go ahead.
So, through the mayor. Ms. Langley, I know in the proposed agreement, it proposes that they would be allowed to change the decor of the chambers one day ahead, and one day after is when it'd have to be put back to normal. We run into a lot of situations to where we use these chambers. These are our city chambers. We use them for a lot of different ceremonies and whatnot. I think the one day is a little much, because we may have something going on the prior. I think three or four hours before, and then come down following is more apropos, because that keeps the facilities to where we can utilize them and not be set up for the county. I think it's important for us to work together with the county and show some work there. But I do have some concerns, as you stressed. I was the one that asked you those questions. And I'd like, Mr. Smith, could you come to the podium, please? Thank you. We have had conflicting information from the board of supervisors and yourself. Can you tell me what your intent is on rebranding city hall for the county's board of supervisors and the planning commission's meetings?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you, Steve Smith interim county administrator, Sutter County. I think some of that conflicting information just came from when staff, probably with the city and county, were just discussing options of things that we could do, like putting the sticker-type signs up or a picture of the board. But I know the supervisors are flexible, as am I. And, you know, if we can come in and have some kind of lightweight signage, which I think we already have, that can fit over the seal, and maybe possibly something here as well, I think that would be it, and we could remove it after. And I would also think that, and I want to make sure, so we'll come and have our staff look at it, though, that it would be something that would be easily removable. And somehow, if there were some situation where our staff couldn't get here, that it would be pretty easy for city or almost anyone, lightweight, that could move it. And that, but we'd respectfully try to match any of the requests that the city has, and then we could see if the joint usage would work in the best interest of the city and the county. And then it would be up to the board and council on the long term to decide how that's working.
Okay. I've got a couple more questions. And the main thing I want to clarify is that we do not confuse the public, because with using the same chambers, you're going to have people showing up, is it a county meeting? Is it a city meeting? Is it a planning meeting? Is it, you know, our planning meeting? You know, which meeting is going on in the chambers at the time? And the reason I ask those questions is, two weeks ago, standing right here in the front row after the meeting, you indicated that you were looking, the county was looking at how they could attach things to the brick out front. So I want to be really crystal clear. I am absolutely utterly opposed to that. Temporary is temporary, and I don't mind, like you said, branding up here, branding there, changing out. And we share the chambers so that you can get your word out. But nothing permanent going on the exterior of our building and branding a city building as a county building, more or less. And I want to be real clear. Is that your intent or not? Because that's what you told me here two weeks ago.
Right. Now, that was just a discussion of possibilities, or if there is in the future a long-term arrangement. We had talked about putting something out there similar to the council chambers and then board chambers, and maybe the county paying for a seal of each that would look nice and it'd be together. But I understand since then, with the request for the, to not have something that, even though that could be removed, I get it, it could cause some markings on the building or something. So, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. So that's something you're not going to pursue. I want to be crystal clear.
Right. We're not going to pursue that.
Okay. And would the county be fine with going up a few hours before the meeting and coming down after the meeting? Because we do use these chambers.
Sure. I would just need to see logistically how we're doing that and moving. I mean, a lot of meetings, if I were here, I could probably remove it myself. So, yeah, but it makes sense to me, and I just need to talk to our staff on, we usually have someone here from IT, like typically at county meetings, we have someone from IT that's working in our basement to record the broadcast and the meeting. And they come up and close everything up. So typically, we have someone at every meeting that does that. I can just confirm and then make sure that they're able to, because they come and open the current chambers and also close. So I don't see why they couldn't do the same here.
And what's the long-term plan? Because this has been in the works for over a decade, talked back and forth. Quite honestly, you have more capacity where you're at. You have a larger overflow room where you're at. What is the long-term plans for the county? Is this, are you looking at this being, starting as temporary and being permanent? Or is this just a temporary until you do the improvements to your building or develop the Kmart building? Can you help me explain what the long-term plan of the county is?
Sure. I think that's really up to the board and council. Well, mainly the council being in ownership of the city, being in ownership of this building. So we have thoughts on different locations for a future construction or remodel. Perhaps even, you know, Whittaker Hall could be a good location for the county, or sorry, not Whittaker, the Vets Memorial Hall here could be a good location for board chambers. But it's, I guess, a matter of priority on construction and capital projects, and I don't see that happening in the near term. So my thought is, and maybe not exactly what the board feels, but I'll tell you, my thought is that if this arrangement doesn't work, then it could be an amicable parting of ways. But if it does work, then great, and we're able to collaborate on something. So I don't think there would be any hard feelings either way, and that we could see if this would be a good collaboration.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
All the questions I have. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. Councilman Shaw asked some of the similar questions that I had in mind, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Help me understand, then, if the county has been considering looking for a particular location to hold supervisor meetings since 2007, where did the idea arrive that the city council chambers was the best option of all the opportunities that the county has?
I don't know the extended history of it. My understanding of it is that supervisors have spoken with people on the council at various times about it, and that's how it came up. So I don't know that it was a staff idea.
Yeah, I had, I was approached by supervisor. Yeah, I had, I was approached by supervisors asking to use the chamber, but it was not a particular idea that came from me to utilize the chamber. So, you know, having been here for a few months, there's some historical data that I'm not clear about, because if the opportunity to develop locations that were mentioned, you know, Kmart or another location, what's the plan? I like more a defined, I thought, of, hey, we need a year, we need two years at the most, what is, what's the particular timeframe that you're actually asking us?
Right, I'm not asking for a particular timeframe, as I mentioned previously, this was an idea that had come up, I know the city and county looked at it last that I recall in early 2017, but nothing materialized, and from what I understand, supervisors and council members had discussed it, again, we're bringing this up as an opportunity to explore collaborating here, and the county would be paying an amount to the city to help fund for building and maintenance and technology replacement, as mentioned, and if something were to not work out, then the county could continue hosting meetings in the Hall of Records.
What is the challenges at the Hall of Records that is concerning the, you and the supervisors from not continuing meetings there and wanting to use the chambers here?
I don't have concerns, I think it's more a matter of having a more centralized location by the government center, and, you know, we currently stream meetings, and we're going to be able to have that technology here pretty cheaply as well. So, we would be looking at replacing equipment over the next couple of years as well, cameras and upgraded audio and video, so I don't think there's any particular concern there, I think it was more of a collaboration between the county and the city to see if something like this would work out and could be beneficial to both sides.
Right, I totally agree on the idea of working together and collaborating, sometimes space use can be challenging, I'm not sure if, we've had, the last five months, five and a half months, I've had several closed session meetings that have kind of one after the other, and so I don't know if there would be conflicting times and, because of existing other obligations, that could delay some of that process if we were looking at those things in the future. And who knows, you know, hopefully things will settle with where we're having not as many of those, but not able to predict the future on that. So, I'm willing to entertain the idea, but I really am hoping that we have a timeframe to kind of say, hey, is this working, is it not working, you know, kind of, we revisit the terms of agreement, you know, if it's six months or a year from now, and say, is this working for us or isn't it working, and, you know, is it time to take a look at another option, and maybe some other really good development opportunities will come through the county that you'll say, hey, we're ready to move out. So, that's kind of the direction that I'm leading at this moment, thank you.
Through the mayor, thank you, Mr. Smith, for joining us this evening, I want to speak enthusiastically in support of this. I think anytime that governmental agencies can get together and perhaps help each other, I think it's a good thing. I don't see with the discussions that have occurred between you and our staff and in regards to signage, et cetera, and I know some of the concerns there, I think those have been addressed. I've traveled up and down the state in my former position as a fire chief, and there's all kinds of regional governmental centers, and so I think joint use is something that's common, rather than uncommon, or more common than not, anyway. This chambers is used by Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, our Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, I mean, it's used, it's used a lot, and I think we can, we can plan around those things, it should be used by the public, the public paid for it, and when it sits here empty, I think it does make sense to share where sharing can be, we're doing that with our fireworks, which we'll talk about later, later this evening. I'm all about efficiency, this makes sense, we just, Ms. Miller talked about the cost, your sharing and the cost through your, through your, through your rent, I guess, that will help offset some of the costs for some of this AV equipment that we need to have, and certainly you'll be able to use, so I'm all for it. I don't see any downside, and if there is a downside, I trust that, that between you and our interim city manager, or if need be, our council to the board, we'll be able to hammer that out, or we'll separate friendly, so I appreciate you being here tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
You're good. All right, well now, I will step in and just echo what Mark just said, his enthusiastic support, the collaboration, the partnership, the relationship, the efficiencies, it seems to be a win-win, schedules, we can always work through that, and I look forward to doing that with you, I'll just cut it short and say, I think it's a, it's a great thing.
Thank you.
Do you want to add one more? Well, we have one more addition over here.
Sorry. I think that one of the things that benefits the city of Uba City on this too, because, you know, you're looking for a win-win, is how many times have I come into this parking lot for a meeting, and I cannot find parking, I'm parking over at your, at the Veterans Center, with your, with your choice to go ahead and improve the parking lot, improve continuity so that we can walk from that parking lot, I think that's a win-win for the city as well, so I meant to mention that earlier, and I look forward to that as a benefit of this collaboration.
One more example of a good gesture on your, on the county's behalf, so we appreciate that, sir.
Through the mayor, follow-up question, Mr. Smith, don't read me wrong that I'm against it, I just got a ton of questions, I thought of two more that came up, because we've got it, the agreement is open-ended on the lot, and we trust our interim city manager to take care of and do what's in the best interest of the city. The two things that come up is, if there's a scheduling conflict, who takes priority? If we have something, Ms. Langley, if we have something come up that is, we have a special closed session, something that works, something that comes up and it conflicts with the county, do we have to punt, or do we take priority? That would be my first question. It's just logistics is really what I'm getting to.
I can speak, or if you'd like, Diana.
She's flipping through the agreement, maybe I missed it or whatnot.
I believe, and it'd be great if she can verify, that the city has preference when it comes to conflict, conflicting meetings, and that, other than our normal scheduled meeting, which is opposite weeks of the cities, and we meet at 3 o'clock, so, other than those set meetings and with the Planning Commission, which we were working out, if the county wanted to say, hey, we'd like to have a special meeting on something, but you're looking at the same dates, you would take preference, the city would.
Just verifying, and the last question that I had, I know like tonight, it was, mind you, it was here for a presentation, but our police officers were here, the county's been no different than any other government agencies, you've had issues over at the current location, where you've had to have the sheriff's department out there or whatnot, with everything from homeless people, there was incidences over there, who's going to, are we going to incur additional costs if the security is going to be needed here, or is that going to be a responsibility of the county when you're having your meetings here?
Right, a county responsibility, and we have a deputy provided by the sheriff at every meeting, and then in addition, sometimes the sheriff or other staff are there as well, and then on issues that we think may attract a large crowd or people that have very strong, you know, opinions on things, like we've had in the past with State of Jefferson or marijuana, things that tend to pack the place, we also request additional sheriff's security. So, yeah, it'll be a county responsibility.
Okay, I do agree that we need to work together, I do trust in the contract that, as Councilmember Boom Garden said, if it doesn't work, 60 days either party, we say this did not work, I'm willing to go for it on a, you know, let's see how it works. So, thank you, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Would you like to go ahead, Ms., make a motion since you're on a roll?
Well, to the mayor, I'd like to make staff's recommendation of Sutter County Board of Supervisors using the city council chambers.
Motion to approve staff's recommendation, what you're saying?
That's what I said, yeah.
There you go.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Number 21, request for project partnership with Sutter County Library Innovation Center project, Diana.
All right, so first, I would like to acknowledge in the audience that we have James Ochsner, did I say that correctly, Oxner, who's in charge of the library, and then Guadalupe Rivera with Sutter County, who I believe is the project manager for the library project. So background for this, in 2007, Library Impact Fee was created to fund library-related capital costs attributable to the impact of new development, there's currently a little over $1.1 million available in that account. Sutter County is proposing to reconfigure the existing library to create an innovation center, so they're going to be relocating some internal walls, and also with the advancements in technology, they're able to provide services in a different way, a more efficient way, which allows them to free up some space, and hopefully if I'm speaking incorrectly, they will correct me, to free up some space to create this innovation center. So according to a letter from Steve Smith, the renovation project would enhance and expand services to the community within the existing library floor space through the addition of the innovation center. So, Sutter County is proposing to use county library funds to fund the design portion of the project, and so just for history, the county issued an RFP to evaluate the library, to come up with some ideas for projects to better utilize the space, and there was a committee, I believe of Sutter County and Uba City employees that reviewed the proposals, and a consultant was recommended, came up with this proposed layout, and so the county's at the point that they are ready to move forward with the design, and they would fund the design in the amount of $177,617, but they're requesting that Uba City contribute their library impact fee funds to fund the construction, which is estimated at $1 million. So if council is supportive of the county's request, staff would coordinate with the county at the time of project award to determine how much city library impact fees would be transferred to the project. So, recommendation to partner with Sutter County on the library innovation center and commit to transfer up to $1.163 million in city library impact fees to the project. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Oh wait, I do have one point to add. So James sent an email last week, and some staff went and did a tour of the library, and it was, it was surprising in terms of the services that they provide, it was amazing in terms of the services that they provide, but he sent an email that during the first week of summer, they've had 400 kids signed up for the summer reading program, they served 131 lunches in three days, and in one morning, they had over 70 people in storytime, craft time. And so if you go to the library and look at the utilization of that space, it's amazing what they're able to accomplish within that facility, so I just wanted to add that in.
Very good, very good. Anybody in the public care to comment? All right, comments, questions from the dais? If not, we can take a motion.
I do have a question.
One question, go ahead.
Seems to me that there was some correspondence that I received that was concerning the use of the impact fees limited to the expansion of the library, and I want to, someone sent that to me.
The city attorney did.
Yeah.
If you have questions, I'd suggest that we maybe talk privately with regards to certain items, and confidential email or confidential memo.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, through the mayor, I'm just going to go back, give me a second here, please. In reviewing the, in the background of the report, it talks about, or it gives reference to the adoption of certain development impact fees, and in that, part of those funds were coming for the library income, excuse me, library impact fee, correct?
Correct.
And in the impact fees, it said specifically of new development, and it was referencing additional square footage, and this is, excuse me, okay. Did I miss something? I was reading, okay. Additional square footage to, I'm reading the report from, I'm, excuse me, I'm a bit confused here.
I'm so sorry to interrupt, Councilwoman, just as a reminder that occasionally our office does send out confidential emails regarding certain items, and you may receive those by email, they are not part of the staff report, they're actually a part of a separate item, and maybe I'm misunderstanding where you're reading from, but I just did a little.
I'm reading item 21, Shannon, so I'm reading right off the public report, okay? Thank you for watching out for me, thanks, and I think that that's what you two were trying to say, thank you, I appreciate it, I was confusing me, no, you were saying, okay, you were saying something else.
That's what I was.
Thank you. I'm trying to work through the process here to understand the impact fees, it's talking about additional square footage, so I guess my question to you is, can we legally ask to take these funds, and I'm not crossing boundaries here, to utilize these funds for the new design, which, I love the new design, I don't know if we can do that, I guess that's my question.
Diana, do you mind if I jump in, maybe Councilwoman, I can answer your question, there is always legal risk when you transfer funds from one entity to another public entity, one of the things that the city council can do to reduce that legal risk is to require the receiving party to defend, hold harmless, and indemnify the city.
Okay.
So that if there is a risk, that can be covered by the receiving party who's making use of those funds. If you have particular items with regards to this particular issue on legal risks, I would, you know, urge that we either do that separately or confidentially, rather than putting that on the record, which is pretty typical is what I recommend with any funds on these sorts of things. So, the council basically has three options tonight.
Yes.
They can approve it this evening and provide it to the county, they can approve it this evening contingent upon a defend, hold harmless, and indemnification regarding the funds with the county, or they can choose not to, not to approve it this evening or to continue the matter.
Okay, I, I'm leaning towards the number two that you mentioned, or number three, so I will leave it at that, okay? Thank you.
You have a comment, sir?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the concept of the library is a great concept, our daughter goes there probably once a week and is in there. The real fact of the matter gets to where are the funds coming from, what was the original intent, and what can be done with those. As our city attorney outlined, the fact that there are three options, option two, while you're looking at a whole, hold harmless and indemnification, that still doesn't bring the impact fees back to the city, should they hold us harmless and defend us, and if they lose the court case, should it go that far, they would have to restore the city back whole. So, with that, love the project, but my opinion, wrong use of funds, we can't change what was done 20-plus years ago, and we're kind of pickled in, but love the concept of the library.
Mr. City Attorney, under the indemnification request that we will likely be making if it moves forward, would that include a reimbursement if the city is on the hook for the?
Yes, if the city council includes that, so defend, hold harmless, and indemnify the city.
Exactly.
So, any penny spent by the city expended on this, the county would have to reimburse the city for that cost. The county would be taking the risk.
Okay, and so that would be the option number two that you referred to?
Yes.
And it would be necessary for whomever makes the motion to repeat everything? Or would be, are we on record based on saying what you said?
Just, just to prove it with a defend, hold harmless, and, yeah, what the attorney said. Option two, what the attorney said.
I would definitely be in support of that. I do, reading in the, in the public staff report here, while construction, we not, might not be brought into the footprint, we are definitely constructing and having essentially a brand-new library as a result of this great plan and with a, with a great community asset here. And I think with the spirit of those regulations, it definitely falls into that, and I would be in favor of that, or will be in favor of that.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor. City Attorney, with the identification clause in there, typically that is with, you know, the legal fees and expenses, things of that. But I'm specifically looking at the one point one six three million that they're asking for. If it went and was defeated in court, would the county also have to reimburse us back the one point one six three million?
Every penny that goes out would have to be reimbursed back.
That was the clarification I needed, thank you.
Are you entertaining a motion, or?
Mr. Boomgarden would like to speak.
No, no, I was good.
I saw your lad on you nodded. I am entertaining a motion then.
Okay, I motion that we go with item number two, what our attorney said. So I don't have to repeat the whole entire.
All right, we have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
You got yourself a library, bigger and batter.
Not bigger.
Well, batter.
All right, item number twenty-two, business from the city council, council member Boomgarden, you're up, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Want to take off a couple of things here. Attended the, the awards ceremony picnic for the Uba City Fire Department. Quite a nice event. They chose to recognize four individuals for their service to the community and their service to the department. It was heartwarming to see some of the folks that I'd actually hired receive those awards. So that was, that was nice. Attended a meeting with, with the board of supervisors to visit with the board of Sun Suite and their leadership. Very enlightening. They, they are a very vibrant part of our community and valued part of our community. They, they are a going concern, and they are feeling quite a bunch of pinch, if you will, from the state of the, what's going on in this state in regards to what's happening to businesses. I wouldn't consider them a flight risk, but I would consider them a top priority of this city to continue to meet with them to address any of the needs and concerns they have. Big employer, big tax generator, and probably the biggest takeaway was they're not just necessarily churning in, churning dollars around here. They're bringing in three hundred million dollars of outside of this area money into this community. Of course, it's going and doing other things, but by far, I'm sure they're, if they're not in the top two or three there, I would be surprised. Went to, attended a SUBUCA, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. They're in full swing with their, their good weather projects now. Continue to be impressed by that agency. There was some concerns as, as the snow melt happened. And Mike Bissette, who's their director of engineering, was very, very responsive to concerns that I think the city had and able to get that out to our constituents. Finally, I want to thank the council members for supporting a regional fireworks show. This is, this is a major deal for, for the community. And to each and every one of you, you know, the support that you showed and the patience as we work through this process of putting on a regional fireworks show. And I also definitely need to acknowledge the city of Marysville for their participation. I'm going to come back to them in a minute. Sutter County, thank you, and their board of supervisors. Uba County and, city Marysville, I can't, I cannot.
Water Agency.
Thank you, Uba County, or excuse me, Uba Water Agency and Recology. They've all stepped up to the plate. The show will happen in Marysville. We were hoping to be able to shoot it off the new Fifth Street Bridge. There were some legal things due to timing, we just chose to move it down to Riverfront Park. It's going to come from a soccer field that's located against, or near the river's edge, between the Fifth and Tenth Street Bridge. About a fifteen or so minute show with some, some very, some good pyrotechnics. And kudos to Brad Hudson and the city of Marysville. They're actually signing the contract, they've got most of the liability, if not all of it, over there. But this is something that the community hasn't had for over eighteen years. It's a great regional event, but it's also, I think, a first step in potentially eliminating the use of illegal fireworks. With the belief that if people have a show to go to, they'll be less inclined to buy the nasty stuff that shoots up in the air. So again, thank you. And Diana, thank you for being patient, and thank the staff. And I've acknowledged those, and will thank them personally when I get the chance for their support so far. We're, we're getting close to the edge here, and hopefully we'll have a great show with a lot of attendance. Thanks.
All right, that's been, councilwoman Espendola.
I first wanted to acknowledge Councilman Boomgarden for his tenacity and leadership in getting this done. You mentioned this in, in a conversation when we were going on a bridge tour. And you just said, you know, I have this idea and I'm thinking. And, and so I appreciate the fact that you truly took, from my perspective, the leadership in this. And so I, I want to recognize you for doing that. And, and also that your way of being able to bring in people, even if there are different opinions or thoughts and ideas of who takes what, you know. And you, you do it with a lot of class and a lot of respect. So thanks for honoring that in our city and our community. One of the favorite, one of my favorite new things as a city council that I enjoyed so far this year is the high school graduations. Going to River Valley High School and Uba City High School graduations were really touching to see the, the students in our community reach that milestone. That was really a special moment. Also seeing the awards that we all shared at, that we didn't receive, but the fire guys. You know, I think it has a bigger place when they give it, you know, it's an award that is selected within the group of people. So they're honoring each other. And so to see that and be part of that this year was, was really nice, too. The food was great. Man, they are good cooks, I have to say. The Sun Suite tour, I was really fascinated with the tour. But I was, I was genuinely fascinated, not fascinated, genuinely taken by the, the welcoming and also the interest of the CEO and the board of a few board members of the Sutter, excuse me, Sun Suite. Because they made a comment that in their years of being here in the community that I think that this was the first time that they've had this combined meeting with city council members, board of supervisors. And it almost kind of made them a little uncomfortable, like, why are you all here? But once that was through, it was a great opportunity for myself to listen, to hear, hear, hear directly from them what, what values, what things are important to them. What Councilman Boomgarden mentioned on, I'd like to add that the pride that they take for the people that work for Sun Suite, how strong pride they take in their valuing their employees. I heard that well through the, the CEO and the board of directors. But one of the biggest things that they asked, because, you know, it's like, how can we help you? How can we help you continue business here and so on? And one of the biggest asks was that helping with policy and issues, with state policies that are causing an encroachment and difficulties for a lot of local businesses or any business to do profitable, good work here in California. That was one of the big things that they requested in that meeting. And I'm sure Councilman Shaw will add to, and, and the mayor was also there. Unfortunately, vice mayor was ill on that day. The, I, I, the Gilzire, what is it?
Gilzizer.
Gilzizer Drainage, which I, I get to chair a ditch committee. And it's quite fascinating. I'm learning more about ditches than I never thought. I used to play in ditches when I was a kid, working out on the farm. But now I, I get to chair and be in charge of one large ditch. So one big change is we're not meeting monthly, we may be meeting quarterly. So I'm just adding that part. We also attended, if you have not had the chance to go to the Sutter County Museum or Community Museum, they just did a beautiful renovation, and I won't take all the time on that, but it was just amazing. Very impressed. You saw the summer stroll presentation. I was just in a great, the weather was perfect, the, the company was great. There was a couple of contestants and a couple of things, and I'm not going to take that one away from the vice mayor. Did the river, excuse me, the ribbon cutting today, I attended the ribbon cutting today with the bank of Feather River. What state-of-the-art banking facility, beautiful facility. And one, a couple of things that Julie mentioned about that ninety-eight percent of the, whoever, you know, developed, built the facility, ninety-eight percent were from local people. And I believe a hundred percent of all the funds that through that bank is loaned out and utilized locally. So a good, another great reason to bank with Bank of Feather River. So thank you.
All right, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amongst everything that all the rest of the council members, and I worked, so I did kind of double duty. But I'll hit the highlights real quick. Graduations were great, Sutter County Library was amazing what they've done. City Stroll, I was there, just wasn't in the photo opportunities. I was walking up and down, checking on the different people of our community and, and just visiting that evening. I sat on the Uba Sutter Transit, and a couple of notable things that's coming up there is you will start seeing new buses within the next probably eighteen to twenty-four months. They're in a fleet replacement, a lot of that has to do with the zero emissions coming up in about fifteen years. But also most notably is in January, the route will start from Sam's Club, Sun Suite, bus stop there to the Uba, Sutter, Sutter County campus of Uba College. That will start in January of two thousand and twenty, not the fall semester, but the spring semester. So that will be upcoming. Kudos to Councilmember Boomgarden. He's led the charge on bringing back community, and we're actually seeing that over and over with everything that's going on. The Fourth of July is actually turning out to be a full day. We will start that morning. There's been a little subcommittee working in the background with the kids parade that morning at ten. But just prior to that, there was an article in the paper a few months ago about the flagpole on Pluma Street being damaged. You'll be happy to know that that morning at nine-thirty, there is going to be a rededication. So we invite everyone out to see that. And my understanding is that's going to not only be to honor the military, which it was so many years ago, but it's also first responders and, and police and stuff. So police, fire, first responders. So it should be a great morning and then carry on with the kids right up to the great fire truck and the hot dogs that was started by, dare I dare call you a chief, right down the line here. So it should be a fun day. Start off the morning, break in the afternoon, go hit the pool, come back and watch fireworks in the evening. So out of that whole thing, what I can say is I'm starting to see this region come back together as a community. And I think that I want to commend the rest of the council because I see that coming from the council, that we're really reaching out from our city to the other jurisdictions and trying to bring community back. And because we're not all the different little entities around here, we're one great big community. Final comment that I will leave you on is the concern of Sun Suite. Real easy, Mr. Burns, I told him we'd send you to the Capitol and along those same lines. Soon as we get done with the fireworks, we'll head down to your house, because I saw you laughing. Second show, I think, will be down on the south end of town that evening. So no, that's, that's all I have. So, Mr. Mayor, it's back to you.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Last couple of weeks was a busy couple of weeks. There was over twenty-five events that I attended. I'm just going to highlight on seven, make it short and sweet, it's getting late. Of course, we all attended the summer stroll. I got dethroned of being the chicken wing champion, hot wings champion. But the young man that took second place last year took first place this year, so we swapped spots. So now it's one and one, yeah, it's one and one, yes. Yes, yeah, yeah. So the, the grand reopening of our museum, the, the museum's been changed. The proper wording for our museum now is Community Memorial Museum. That was on the re-ground opening, that was the name change also. Also, we also attended both graduations, the Uba City Fire Department's employee picnic, Bank of Feather River this morning. Attended Commander Tappy's retirement luncheon. And also, the mayor and I attended Habitat Humanities Ribbon Cutting for Permanent Housing. This happened to be in Marysville, but I just want to say that, you know, there's eight hundred people out there, but we have another family that's in permanent housing, and that's two to four less people that are out there in the river bottoms. And, and, you know, it's, it's slow, but it's, it's a good cause. And it's, we're working on it, and hopefully we're going to fix it here. Not in the near future, but we're going to fix it here in the, in the far future. We're going to get this fixed and taken care of. And that's it for me, thank you.
All right, thank you. Some repeats of events and whatnot, but one of the main things I went to was a board meeting for the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. They had a, the big takeaway for me there was they had a committee on site selectors. And what does that mean? That means businesses or individuals or companies that are looking to relocate or establish residency in a community. The big takeaway there was they reiterated to us that it's not just about impact fees. They, the companies often come to the municipalities, municipalities and discuss impact fees because they are under the assumption that's all we can do for them. However, the, the encouragement we received from those on the committee, and there are some big, big names, is that look at a broader picture. It's about transit, it's about mobility, it's about education, it's about quality of life. The, the things that we can bring, or our community can bring to members of their employees. Workforce development is another big one. We've had discussions about that here at City Hall, too, that we're going to start trying to at least do our role in helping ensure that. So that's going to, that all translates into economic development, which is prosperity for us. So that was a good conference, there's a lot of things going on there. SECOD, we continue to prepare for the next funding round. Our project under the Green Means Go initiative is Bridge Street. We continue to work on that, as I'm sure the community is aware. It's a slow process, but we continue to, to work on that, try to get some economic vitality going on there and start using that as a springboard to spread out the, well, the wealth, literally. SUBUCA, as Councilmember Boomgarden discussed, they are moving full steam ahead. In fact, with their fair weather projects, the final phase of the West Levy Project, which is our East Levy, is at the Orville Wildlife Area, then they're going to move on to projects down the Sutter Bypass. So they continue to do a good job, Mike Bissette is doing a phenomenal job. Habitat for Humanity Ribbon Cutting, that was great to see that family, they were literally homeless, I think it was just, what, two weeks prior? And they put them, a family of two, right into a, not a new home, but a refurbished home. It looked quite nice, and they looked very happy. Once again, the museum re-ground opening, what a community asset that is, it's unbelievable. That she does, Jessica's over there doing a really, really good job. Yet another partnership by changing that, the name of the museum, little things like that. The partnership today with the council chambers, the library funding, the fireworks show, which by the way, congratulations on that, that was a lot of work, a lot of leadership. Those things are doing exactly what we all talk about, and that's foster community. It, it has you that, that, that feeling of, of home. And, you know, although times, different municipalities may have competing objectives, when you do have those conflicts come up, the relationship you establish from the front end will. end will make you that much easier to work through. And I'm confident that we can work through virtually anything. I really do truly mean that. Summer Stroll, once again, as I said earlier today, seems like yesterday, so it's been a long meeting. But what a great time that was. I, I can't say enough good about that. It's, it was a fun time, and we're happy to be a part of that. So a lot of other things on the horizon coming up, we'll be able to announce, projects we're working on, personnel things we're working on, this new city manager coming on board soon. Exciting, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but looking forward to it, it's going to be a good thing. So that being said, I will go ahead and, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for all you guys sticking through it for all of tonight, appreciate it.